Good afternoon. It's a wonderful day, wonderful day. My name is Twin Green and I will be the moderator for the day. I am the founder, president, and CEO of the Lincoln Option Center. And we are a community mental health center serving the South suburban area and Chicago. We've been in the marketplace for around 28 years. And when I attended the Gandhi King Legacy Roundtable Summit last February, at the invitation of Congressman Danny K. Davis, we love him. We had a wonderful session at Dr. Kumar's Naperville Center. At that summit, there were over 50 powerful, and I have to say that word because behavioral health providers are just that. We are some powerful people because the work we do demands their power from us. And that theme for that day was the challenges behavioral health providers endure and are enduring during this COVID pandemic. And the momentum and energy generated from that day was so high. And everyone felt, in one way or the other, that there needed to be a space and a place for behavioral health providers to be strengthened so that we can continue to do the work that we do so effectively in our communities. It was a very historical day. And something else very special happened during that day. I was humbled when the organizer and the vibrant energy behind Dr. Vijay Prabakar and Dr. Tarek Butt came together with this vision, excuse me, came together with this vision to create the Citizens Action Alliance for Behavioral Health. And at that moment, they decided that Twin Green would be the ambassador for the Citizens Alliance for Behavioral Health for the Southland Region. And I am so excited and so thankful for that opportunity. So not only did Dr. Butt, Dr. Prabakar, and a whole host of other people come together for that day to create this, and this is the reason why we're assembled here today. You are here for a purpose today, springing forward from what we started on that historical day. So with all that being said, welcome! We gotta keep this energy going here. We have to keep the energy going. This is some wonderful work. So the next item that would have been on our agenda was an introduction of all of you wonderful people as participants today. But because our wonderful congressman's busy schedule, he has asked us to graciously let him come a little earlier in the program, and we're going to give him that opportunity to do so. So I have this esteemed honor and pleasure of introducing this man that really needs no introduction because I know that when we watched television through an election season, when Rajah was on the television all the time branding his name, branding his effort, skip the last name, he said, just remember Rajah. And it worked. It worked because now we now have this great man right here to my right that is representing us at the U.S. Congressional District, the 8th Congressional District, and we are so proud. We are so proud of you. We are so proud of you. And it is my honor now to let you know that this fearless leader who is always protecting our democratic right in Congress, serves on the House Intelligence Committee, and earlier this year, President Biden and Vice President Harris appointed him into the COVID Pandemic Relief Commission. That's right. Give him his props for that. And he is a challenger because he takes on the challenge. He is not afraid at all. So we made the right choice when we chose Rajah. Stand to your feet and give this man a round of applause if he comes to the podium.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Good afternoon. It's so nice to be with you. And yes, just call me Rajah. I like to joke that my last name gets me on a first-name basis with everyone. And so please call me Rajah. I want to just say a special thank you to all of you and all the distinguished members of the behavioral health and mental health community for being here today. I want to say a special thank you to Neil and Raj Patel and MedStar. Give them a big round of applause. They are true leaders in the community. They are civic-minded, charitably-minded folks. And I've known their family for a very long time, and it's so nice to be in the place named after their father, who was a good friend of mine, too. So thank you to all the Patel's and the MedStar family. I want to say a special thank you to Chief Vijay Prabakar. Where is he? Oh, there he Of course Ambassador Twin Green. We need a twin. We need another one of her. Dr. Tarek Butt, my good friend, and of course Santosh Kumar, stalwart members of the community, again, people who are looking out for people, people who are trying to serve, people who are there when people need them, to be there for them. So give all of them a big round of applause. And of course, my very good friend, who I don't see this moment, but maybe he's on his way, but the indomitable, the ever-present in spirit Danny K. Davis, the congressman for this district, and one of my closest friends and allies in Washington, D.C. He really is the, I say in some ways, he's the conscience of Congress. He stands for those who can't speak for themselves. He stands for the voiceless. He stands for those who don't have hope. He stands for those who need, they need a fighter in Washington. And that's what Danny K. Davis does every day and has done every day of his life. And I am so grateful to be his colleague and friend. Now, what we're talking about today is very serious, folks. You know this. We're talking about behavioral health issues, mental health issues. We're talking about things that until recently were taboo. You don't talk about these things. You certainly don't talk about it in the culture that I come from, the Indian-American, the South Asian community. You don't talk about it in lots of communities. It turns out that's something that unfortunately is common to all of us. But that has to change. That has to change. The statistics are pretty daunting. Forty percent of Americans report depression or some form of anxiety and mental health issues during this pandemic, which is only natural given the isolation that it has induced. One in four children and young adults have had suicidal thoughts in the past month. That statistic is frightening. Fifty percent of doctors and healthcare workers report burnout, stress, anxiety, and a lack of sleep. Now, with regard to that last statistic, if you think about it, and I'm looking at Dr. Tarek Butt because he deals with these people every day, one out of every two physicians reports these feelings. And guess what, folks? That affects all of us. Not only does it affect them, but it affects their patients. Now, think about it. When you go to the doctor next time, are you dealing with that one of every two people who's currently going through a mental health issue even as he or she is treating you? So that's why we have to deal with this subject seriously and strongly right now. On that latter score, with regard to health workers and physicians on the front lines, I happen to be married to one of them. Priya, my wife, is an anesthesiologist. The joke is that we both put people to sleep. So please have a little caffeine now if you can. But on a more serious note, she was intubating those COVID patients from one year ago, and she's been doing COVID procedures ever since. And you can imagine what the stress and anxiety levels were, especially at the beginning when we didn't know what COVID really was, nor was there the personal protective equipment or gear necessary to take care of these people. I remember on the first weekend of the COVID pandemic, we had to go to Home Depot to buy a welder's face mask for her because they didn't have enough personal protective equipment in the hospital. So because of that, and because of everything that folks like you have been doing over the last year, I, in Congress, have taken it upon our office to basically advocate for you. And in that regard, I'm pleased to announce that as part of the American Rescue Plan, I co-authored the Lorna Breen Act. The Lorna Breen Act is incredible legislation that got signed into law by President Biden, which authorizes $100 million in behavioral health workforce education and training grants, along with $100 million in programs to help community-based and child and adolescent mental health. That is part of a larger package of $1.5 billion in mental health block grants. This is a big deal because this money will be used to help augment and establish mental health and wellness programs for the very people, namely you, who are trying to treat other people with their anxiety, their depression, their burnout, all the mental health issues that they go through. We have to help the helpers, and you are the helpers. And so we have to take care of you. So I'm so honored that this particular piece of legislation, which I co-authored, is now law. And so please take advantage of this funding, and please contact my office if you have any questions about how to access the funding that has come through the American Rescue Act. All that being said, let me just say one last thing, which is thank you. Thank you for taking on the duties and the obligations and the responsibilities associated with your profession. Because what you do every day in taking care of people at their lowest points allows the rest of us to do our jobs, but one of those jobs is to take care of you. And so I am here for you. My office is here for you. We are all here for you. And whatever you need, let me know, and we will jump to attention. So with that, let me close with my favorite saying, which is that yesterday is history, tomorrow's a mystery, but today is a gift. That's why we call it the present. And so I'm honored and blessed to be with you here for just a few minutes of your precious time to celebrate you and your institutions and your profession because America cannot function without you, and we are so much better off having you among us. So thank you so much, and God bless.
Thank you, Congressman, for that powerful call to action. If we could just stop for just one second, we would like, before the congressman leaves, for some photos here, the group photograph right on the stage. Thank you. So we are back in our rightful places. Wasn't that fun? Okay, so before I move on any further, I just would like to acknowledge Neil Patel and his brother Raj for hosting this event in this beautiful auditorium. And if you have not had an opportunity to learn about MedStar, or take a tour, or use their services, you are missing something, believe me, because I have done it, and I love what they do here. So we are so honored and we're so grateful for all that you do, you and your brother, Raj. Thank you so much. Okay, give him a hand. So the next item on our agenda is to get to know who we have in the room, and that is going to be through participant introductions. And you do not have to get up. What we are going to do is we're going to have a handheld mic. And Ali is going to, if you will, come around. We're going to start at table six and make our way around the room. And what I would like for all of you to do is to introduce yourselves by name and the behavioral health organization that you are representing today. Is that good? Okay. Where is Ali? Can someone please find Ali for us so we can move on with our... Thank you. She's all over. Do you have the handheld mic so we can do the introductions? You're going to use this one? Oh, okay. I thought we had two. There it is. And we're going to start at table six, Ali, and then we're just going to work our way all around the room and come back to this table here. And don't be shy. Don't be shy.
Is it on? Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Nellie Vasquez-Roland, president and co-founder of the Safe Haven Foundation. Nice to see you all.
You're welcome.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jeff Blythe, and I'm with UConn Chicago.
I'm Dr. Brandi Jackson. I'm the Director of Integrative Behavioral Health at Howard Brown Health here in Chicago.
I'm Charles. I'm with MedStar Lab and Soft Landings Lab.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Joanna Trask. I'm the Director of Behavioral Health at PCC Community Wellness Center.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Dahlia Galvan Morales. I work at Heartland Health Centers as Director for Community Engagement.
Good afternoon. My name is Vanessa Schwartz. I work for Metropolitan Family Services. I'm the Executive Director of our Southeast Office.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Greg Lee. I'm the Senior Vice President of Behavioral Health with Pillars Community Health.
Good afternoon. I'm Robin Jackson. I'm a family physician, and I work with a charitable organization called Walk in My Shoes.
Good afternoon. My name is Sayeed Khadri. I work for St. Anthony Hospital. I'm a crisis worker there.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ashley Ice. I'm a Behavioral Health Director at National Youth Advocate Program. It's good to see you all.
Hi, everybody. I'm Claire East Townsend. I'm interim Senior Director of Business Operations and Healthcare Systems for Ada S. McKinley Community Services.
Good afternoon. My name is Eric Lindstrom. I serve as a Director of Programs for Asian
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Alex Sierra. I am the Medical Stabilization and Psychiatry Unit Manager.
Good afternoon. Antonia Bishop, practitioner at St. Anthony Hospital.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Dr. James Miller, and I'm currently working with New Solution.
Good afternoon. My name is Vinita Kullabani, Founder, President of Indian American Cultural Association. I'm working with special needs kids and adults for quite some time.
Hi, everybody. I'm Dr. Terrence Shermo with Insoftech and the Dr. Cloud Solution, EHR Solution, and I'm here in Hinsdale.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Raj Patel with MedStar Laboratory and Soft Landing Labs.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Dr. Chorag Ravel. I work as a psychiatrist at Heinz VA Hospital.
Good afternoon. My name is Carrie Patch, and I'm an Advocacy and Public Policy Assistant at National Youth Advocate Program.
Hi, good afternoon. Kristin Diaz also with the National Youth Advocate Program as an advocacy and public policy assistant.
Good afternoon. My name is Jackie Glass. I am the Legislative Affairs Manager for both Heart Grove Behavioral Health System and Garfield Park Hospital. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Roshita Pandey, and I work as a Grants Manager at Metropolitan Asian Family Services.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Radhika Subramanian, and I am a Public Benefits Coordinator for Metropolitan Asian Family Services.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Dr. Sandeep Surti. I'm a manager at Soft Landing Labs.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Praveen Patel. I work for MedStar Lab.
Hello, everyone. I'm Erin Brumfield-Grema. I'm the Director of Beryl Health at Pioneer Center for Human Services.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Wanda Parker, and I'm the VP of Clinical and Therapeutic Services with Aunt Martha's.
Hello. I'm Jay, Director of Family Wellness at Hanol Family Alliance.
Hello. I'm Bruce Braggins, St. Anthony Hospital Crisis Worker.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Carmen Gonzalez with Metropolitan Family Services, Clinical Director of Behavioral Health.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Ramesh Nagul. I'm from Insoftech. Dr. Cloud EHR from Portland, Oregon.
Good afternoon. My name is Sherry Owo-Popo-Hardrick. I'm the interim Senior Director for Behavioral Health for Ada S. McKinley.
Hello. I'm Kelly Epperson. I'm Vice President and General Counsel at Rosecrans.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Tarek Butt. I'm a family physician and also Vice President of Health Affairs at Access Community Health Network and President of Chicago Medical
Hello. I'm Santosh Kumar, the founder of Metropolitan Asian Family Services and treasurer of Coalition of Limited English-Espaking Elders. Thank you.
Hi, Neil Patel. I work with MedStar Laboratory.
Hi. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Dr. Vijay Prabakar, the Founder Chair of Congressman Danny Davis's Multi-Ethnic Advisory Task Force and the Chairman of American Association of Multi-Ethnic Physicians. Thank you.
Now, did we get everyone? I think we did. The table is set. How about that? Give yourselves a great hand for even showing up today. This is all about us, healthcare providers today. This was put on for our benefit, and we are going to absorb everything, and starting with what Congressman Rajah mentioned, bringing that money back here for us. That's what it's about. That's good Congressman work. So next, we're going to, we're going to have our greeting for today. And our greeting is going to come from Neil Patel, the CEO of MedStar Laboratories, again. And Neil is a successful entrepreneur, CEO of MedStar Laboratories, one of the oldest and comprehensive clinically-owned laboratories in the state of Illinois, and that is impressive because most of us use outside labs to get our work done. So we need to bring that money back here. Neil Patel is the Chairman of the Indian American Business Coalition, Vice President of the American Ethnic Coalition, and one of the founding members of the Citizens Action Alliance for Behavioral Health. He is also a resident and constituent of Congressman Rajah's 8th Congressional District, a community philanthropist. a community philanthropist. And you are such a gracious host and it is my honor to bring you to the podium. Raj.
Thank you, Ambassador Green. Am I too loud? I want to welcome everyone this afternoon. Behavioral healthcare has engaged everyone's attention these days. It's been predicted that by the year 2030, behavioral health will be America's greatest challenge. I'm happy today, I'm sorry, I'm happy that all of you have come together to engage the attention of our elected Congressman Danny Davis. Here he comes, Mr. Danny Davis and Congressman Rajakrishnamurti. It was Henry Ford who said that coming together is the beginning. Keeping together is the progress. Working together is a success. MedStar wishes the best for this meeting and is happy to be part of this action alliance. Personally, on behalf of Raj and MedStar Laboratory, I would like to congratulate each of you for this amazing work that you are doing for our community. Thank you.
Neil is a man of few words, but he speaks them very well and intentional. We thank you. We thank you, Neil. So we have the star in the room now, Congressman Danny K. Davis. What an entrance. Thank you. Thank you so much. And he is timely because it is time to introduce him and it is time for us to have our word of welcome. And this is going to come from none other than Congressman Danny K. Davis. The Congressman, as you all know, as the father of community in the United States, has a long legacy as being in office for nearly 50 years. That's a long time. And currently, the member of the U.S. House Ways and Means Committee, and are you the Chair? Congressman? Senior member, okay. And also the Chair of the Worker and Family Support Subcommittee. And he's been in Congress for the past 28 years. That is so impressive. Man knows everything and he cares about us. And over all those years, he has never, ever stopped trying to figure it out, make it happen, because he cares about what he does. And actually, we are all gathered here today because of his initiative, his leadership, and his multi-ethnic advisory task force, and his vision for a healthier America. Thank you, Congressman, for putting this together and having all of us leaders at the table today under one roof. I applaud your thinking beyond your 7th Congressional District and being inclusive of the whole greater Chicagoland. I proudly introduce you to come to the podium and give us our welcome. Give it up for him.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. You know, my mother always told us, yeah, my mother always told us that flattery, like perfume, is to be smelled and not swallowed. So let me thank you for your kind words. Let me also welcome all of you to what I consider the most interesting piece of geography in North America pressed into what is a political subdivision. And that's a place called the 7th Congressional District, which begins at the lake downtown in the Chicago Loop, comes all the way out to this area, to the end of Cook County. We call this the Western suburbs, Maywood, Bellwood, Broadview, Hillside, Berkeley, Westchester. Also goes all the way out to Inglewood, going south, and of course, the Gold Coast, north. It is home to 24 outstanding hospitals, four medical schools, some of the most impressive medical facilities in America. Two of our hospitals are always included in the top 100 hospitals in the United States of America. Loyola, right down the street, is one of those. Behavior health is one of the greatest needs that exists in our society. So to see that you are engaged in the advocacy for greater awareness, greater understanding, greater funding, and greater recognition. I was reading the newspapers on my way out and saw where a fellow who had been a former National Football League player had just shot and killed five people. Now you wonder, what in the world would cause a star football player who probably had made as much money in one season as most people would make in a lifetime doing shooting and killing five people? We're trying to figure that out, trying to find it out, because we don't really know. We know that there may have been all kinds of different contributing factors, different reasons, uncertainty, unhappiness, unaware. So as you search for solutions, I welcome you to join with each other, which is what you're doing, to try and find answers to some of the most pressing problems that our society has ever needed. I commend MedStar for giving us the opportunity to be in this facility. And I commend them for the tremendous work that they do, helping to find the solutions that we are seeking. Have a good day. It's a pleasure to be with you and thank you very much. All right. Let me tell you, I just had a photograph sent to me this morning from the White House picture of myself and the Vice President of the day. And so I've been showing it around, so maybe I'll show the, he was not the photographer.
Okay. So thank you, Congressman Davis, for those profoundly spoken words of welcome. We certainly appreciate everything you do and it is so befitting today with our theme being Race to Increase Funding for Behavioral Health in Chicagoland. And they're hitting it at the mark. Congressman Raj just spoke of I don't know how many millions of dollars that he is helping to orchestrate to come back into our community. And this man here heads up all of what appropriation. So we are in the right place at the right time today with commitments that mean something from these strong leaders and powerhouses in the United States, representing the state of Illinois on our behalf. So we are, we are, we should be tremendously humbled to be assembled here today in the presence of these two strong congressmen. So next, we are moving right along in our agenda. And we will now have opening remarks from Dr. Tariq Butt, who is the President of the Chicago Medical Society and also the Chairman of the Citizens Action Alliance for Behavioral Health. And it is my pleasure to speak about Dr. Butt today. The Chicago Medical Society is the oldest organized medicine group of America, 180 years old, and has over 17,000 practicing physicians in Cook County. The Chicago Medical Society is doing pioneering work in the field of preventive and community medical medicine and also in the area of chronic diseases. And interestingly enough, also in behavioral health, which is very impressive. Didn't steer away. Put that primary health and behavioral health together. And what do we call that today? Integrated health. Come on. That's what it's about, putting those two things together to make people well, holy. And this is an awesome time to be at the table doing this work. Dr. Tariq Butt is also well, a well-known physician administrator, currently serves as a Senior Vice President of Access Healthcare and Mount Sinai. And we all know Chairman of the Citizens Action Alliance for Behavioral Health. I bring to you Dr. Tariq Butt.
Good afternoon and thank you for that generous introduction, Ambassador Twain Green and Honorable Congressman Danny Davis. You know, I live and work in your district. It does stretch a lot and you always do so many great things because a few, we have community health centers, FQHCs, that was done 50-plus years ago, that he's the founding member. And we all are sitting here at Howard Brown or PCC Wellness or Aunt Martha's of the world. So, you know, I mean, it's a great, great afternoon for us to get together and I want to do some acknowledgements. I want to thank, you know, Dr. Vijay Perbaka, who has really orchestrated all of us to be here. So let's give him a round of applause. And Neil and Raj Patel, you are really, really traditionally carrying your, you know, ancestral values and bringing, you know, these services to much-needed communities at such, such an affordable and accessible way that, you know, most of my patients who cannot afford to go anywhere, they come to MedStar. And thank you for doing all of that. And you're really keeping minorities also, you know, access to healthcare for minorities available for them at all given time. So thank you so much for that. And today, we have really gathered here for a very, very important and critical cause as Dr., I can call him Rajah, but doctor also is his wife. But Rajakrishnamurti Congressman mentioned about, you know, behavioral health and its significance. And it goes back a long way. You know, one of the founding members of America who signed the Constitution of America was Ben Rush, Benjamin Rush. Very few people know about him, but he was a great doctor. He was the first one to figure out that, you know, behavioral health is a little bit different than health, you know, general health burden of diseases. Because at that time, when he was in 1776, he signed that, you know, so you can imagine that was a long time ago. At that time, people used to just put these folks into isolation. And that's what really was the only kind of treatment available. We have come a long way, but we have a long way to go. And the reason is that as Dr. Perbaka is very involved with World Health Organization, Benjamin Rush's, you know, approach to these patients helped us shape behavioral health over a period of time. And we started treating these patients. And still, the thing is, a lot of folks don't know they have any emotional or behavioral health problems. As Congressman Rajakrishnamurti mentioned about even healthcare providers, even physicians, you know, Chicago Medical Society keeps doing surveys and what we find, what we find, the burnout, we, we see suicidal rates going up in physician. Congressman Danny Davis just shared with you about a football star, you know. It wasn't unusual for those stars to have concussions and not know that they had emotional problems. We saw a lot of those things happening, unfortunately. Because one of my patients, I can give you one example, that she used to come to me for treatment of hypertension. You know, she was, I started giving her one pill because that's the way you always do. You know, I started adjusting her medication, doing her labs, trying to figure out what was going on. Everything I did was just normal. You know, there was nothing abnormal to continue to really add medications to her blood pressure medication combination. And then one day, and I used to ask her all the time, do you have any stress? Do you have any anxiety? What's bothering you? And she would say, nothing, you know, I'm, I'm fine. I have a job. I'm reasonably, you know, well off. And said, any, any, any issues at job? She said, yeah, here and there. Then I found out, I said, you know, like, you know, everything I asked her, eventually it came to the conclusion, nothing is working. I sent her through the specialist, subspecialist. And then I added one enzymolytic and it started bringing down her medications. And I was amazed that I had, I took her off all the medications because now I had the right medication for her. And a lot of time, these, these problems lead to a lot of things. So that's why World Health Organization asked that we should make behavioral health as part of the public health policy and also social policies. And that's why we are happy we have Congressman Davis in the Congress for us, who really promotes this cause every single day. He brought with Rajakrishnamurti Congressman $1.2 billion. But that's good. That's great. And we must give them a round of applause. But we, at the same time, I know that Congressman Danny Davis will continue to fight and Rajakrishnamurti will continue to fight to bring more money because it's not without resources that we'll be able to address all these emotional and behavioral challenges and come up with a great integrated health home, which we need for every patient, where they can go and feel that they are in a trusted setting, where they can share everything with their physician. And their physician is also emotionally in a great shape. And we all want to be in great shape. So I like to conclude by saying, thank you so much for joining. These voices, you know, together will be, will turn, you know, these whispers turn into roars and they'll become more noise. And those noises will go to those congressmen and senators who do not have good ears like Congressman Danny Davis and Rajakrishnamurti. So thank you so much for joining. If I can take a point of privilege, I want to acknowledge Nellie Vasquez because she really does give a lot of home to these homeless veterans and socially isolated folks. Thank you so much. Great to see you.
Thank you, Dr. Butt, for those wonderful words. We are so excited to just have the right people here today, giving us words of encouragement, motivation to continue to do what we do. It's, it's, it's not every day that we get to come together. During COVID, we've not been able to get together, you know, much at all, you know, unless it's on a Zoom. But to, you know, to come out today and, and even in our masking and social distancing as much as we can, we did it. And, and this is where we should, we should be today. So, great, 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 great. Now, I don't know if we're going to get dazzled with anything, truly dazzled with anything. But next is dazzling with the stars. So I, I don't know what he has up his sleeve here. So I'm, you know, I'm going to see, he wants to be my twin and, you know, some things do happen when you have two people rolled up into one. So next, we're going to hear from Vince Gredich, who is the Vice President of MedStar Labs. And he's going to give us a briefing on MedStar Laboratories. Give it up for Vince.
Good afternoon. Twain, I think you missed it. It's Dancing with the Stars. Would you come out and be my partner? Good afternoon. My name is Vince Gredich and I'm with MedStar Laboratory. My name is Vince Greditch, and I'm with MedStar Laboratories, AKA Soft Landings. A little bit on my background, I've been here for about a year and a half. I met the Patel brothers, Neil and Raj, probably twenty years ago while I was working as the Vice President of Laboratory for ACL Laboratories Advocates Lab. They were my reference lab, or I was their reference lab, because labs have to send some work out that they don't do to bigger labs. I then moved to Wisconsin Diagnostic Laboratories, which is owned by Fraterd Healthcare and the Medical College of Wisconsin up in Milwaukee. And my friends, the Patels, joined me, and we moved up to Wisconsin Diagnostic Laboratories. Along the way, Neil and I always joked that one day, we're going to work together. And so here we are. I moved back to Chicago where I'm from, and I'm proud to say I'm working with MedStar Laboratories. So as a testimonial for MedStar Laboratories, I'm probably a living, breathing, walking, live testimonial, because after twenty years of working with them, I can attest that they're a quality, ethical, integrity organization that I'm proud to work for. So, for starters, now you might wonder why we're talking here and why, what's the fit with MedStar? Well, maybe some of you don't know, but the, the major diagnosis tool, the major tool that physicians use to check on people with behavioral health issues or any medical issues is EMR, your electronic medical record. And did you know that seventy to eighty percent of the electronic medical record is made up of laboratory results? So labs is a critical piece in diagnosing and structuring care for people. So we hope to be able to help you along the way as you get more funding to help more people, to help develop plans and ways to do that. Now, having worked for some of the big companies, I can tell you, one of the big advantages we have here at MedStar Soft Landings is our ability to be nimble. I used to kid Neil all the time that working for ACL in the big hospital labs was kind of like being on a aircraft carrier. And it takes an aircraft carrier four to five miles to turn around. With MedStar, we're kind of like PT boats. We can be very nimble. We can help you. We can facilitate customized plans that you need. Be there. We're local. We live in a community. We are a small business, minority-owned. So I think we cover the bases, and we can be a big help. That's what we're here for. Couple other things to note. Soft Landings is a affiliate sister lab of MedStar Laboratories. So we're doing the drug testing through Soft Landings. But we are a comprehensive laboratory, so we can do everything from blood work to drug testing, urine collections, et cetera. We do EMR. I talked earlier about the electronic medical record. We are readily available to interface to numerous, numerous, pretty much any electronic medical record system you have out there, which will give you the results interfaced at no charge. We have local support, hundreds of courier routes running daily. What else? We have all the managed care contracts you'll need. We're well-contracted with the Illinois PHOs, so we can take care of you in that regard. And we're very nimble. So if anybody needs any customized plans to help along the way, we're here to help. Just give us a call. You can call me personally if you need to. We have a dedicated local sales team. So that's all for, for me. I, I thought we were going to have someone from the drug testing talk, but I don't know if Dr. Faumy showed. No. Okay. So any questions for me while I'm up here? Nobody's taking questions. No? Go ahead.
Do you use a template? And does it formulate a template for the progress?
For the progress notes? You can actually influence that yourself. So doctors typically will set up panels that they might want to run, anywhere from individual, five-panel, ten-panel standards. And we set that up with you to make it easy to work with. Glad I could answer that question. I, I left myself wide open. Yes, ma'am?
Are you doing testing for fentanyl?
For fentanyl? Yes, we are. I don't know that there's anything we don't test for at this point. Challenge us, you know? If, if there's a need, we will develop it. Anyone else? Yes?
Illegal, and legal.
Illegal and legal. I would leave that up to you, I guess. I'd take the fifth out of that. Our, our role is to do the testing. We can support you and give you some advice through our legal attorneys, but really it would come down to what you need to do and what you think is best. Okay? And accordingly, we will do the testing, and we will provide legal, compliant, HIPAA-protected information. You can count on that. Hmm?
Do you use care analysis? Because there are so many great institutions that are using that for customers. Because there are a lot of children that are left poisoned and other rural areas of the world.
Dr. Sanjay, you want to handle that?
Do you want to use the new panel? I would think that's it. I would stop and then you can speak up with any questions.
Was, as Congressman Davis said, the food should be smelled and not digested. And I realize I'm one of the last people in the way of you eating your food. So, thank you very much.
Well, he didn't dance, but he did do something wonderful, didn't he? Thank you, Vince. And any questions that you may have that you didn't get an opportunity to ask, Vince, there will be time to do that this afternoon during the, the other session, the provider session. So just hold on to your questions, and they will get answered today, among others that you may have. Next, we have on our agenda, the World Health Organization Day Update 2021. And this is going to be presented to us by none other than our very own Dr. Vijay, who is a Chair of Congressman Danny Davis's Multi-Ethnic Advisory Task Force and our President of Citizens Action Alliance for Behavioral Health. So keep your ears tuned in as Dr. Vijay, he will talk to all of us and sharing some very significant, I don't want to spill the beans, but our governor is actually being bestowed an award for excellence. And Dr. Vijay is going to speak on all of that, and he can do it much better than I can. So I am going to, at this time, present to you our very own Mr. Personality, Mr. Enthusiasm, Visionary, and all that energy rolled up into one, my friend, Dr. Vijay.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Twin Green, Ambassador Twin Green, for that very kind words. Well, on behalf, I just wanted to do a quick, brief update on the World Health Organization was founded in April seventh, and every year, the World Health Organization Day is celebrated throughout the world. And the, for the last thirty years, a multi-ethnic group of us have been identifying an individual across the world who has made significant impact during that year for being towards the healthcare system. And this year, the awards jury, which included Dr. Tariq Butt and several other ethnic people, Dr. Senobia Sowell, and others, have unanimously decided to award the World Health Day Organization Day Award of Excellence 2021 to Governor J.B. Pritzker for the outstanding work he has done in the state of Illinois in safeguarding us and nurturing us during this COVID pandemic, and his ongoing efforts, and the whole team. And as Congressman Danny K. Davis best described, he would be a role model, how all of us in Illinois are combating this COVID pandemic. So I just wanted to add that there's several of you great healthcare providers who are in this room, and all this came about by our legendary Congressman Danny K. Davis. Please give him a big round of applause. Mental health issue and community health is very dear to our Congressman Danny K. Davis. As you can see, he scoured out four hours of his schedule today to be with us, to listen to all of you, to know what the actual ground realities are, and how he could advance Congress into getting the correct resources for y'all. Not only funding, getting the actual digital age, what you're in technology, somebody referred earlier to electronic medical records. So Dr. Congressman Danny Davis, of course, he's got seven-day honorary doctorates already, but Congressman Davis is, this is really special to him. When we did the Gandhi King Summit, he wanted it to be around the challenges of behavioral health during the COVID pandemic. The Chicago opioid crisis has struck him, and he wants to do something in his lifetime to make that change, not only in the seventh congressional district, my friends, across the state and beyond the borders. You'll be happy to know that this event is being broadcast YouTube alive across the world today with all the, all the significant World Health Organization stations, including in Asia, Africa, and Europe. People in Finland, India, Nigeria, Ghana, Brazil are paying particular attention. They want y'all, the leaders in behavioral healthcare today in Chicagoland, to share your challenges, your successes with them. And wrapping up on that, this initiative of Congressman Davis, which has rolled into the Citizens Action Alliance for Behavioral Health with such a wonderful Ambassador Twin Green. Give it up to her. My God, she's awesome. Seeing her moderate today's session and how well she's pulling us all together, I want to salute you, Madam Twin Green, for this excellent opportunity and continue this great journey you're taking. It's a great responsibility, and thank you all for spending time out here. We are going to do Zoom calls. Those of you all who are interested to share your thoughts with the, your counterparts across the world, please feel free to contact me or Ali Danraj, who's there. She's the CEO of Metro Events, and she's going to put across a delegation of behavioral health leaders from Chicagoland who will travel to overseas countries like India, Brazil, Ghana, Nigeria, and Finland. We're going to do five different SOTIs under the leadership of the Congressman Davis. He wants this to go to, across the globe, not only what you're doing here. So those of you all who would like to be interested, we are, over the course of this year and next year, we'll be doing that with the pandemic. And I would like to, just to bring to attention of Congressman Davis, the different behavioral health providers who are present here today. We have Gateway Foundation, Hanul Family Alliance, Counseling and Youth Development Services, a Safeway Heaven Foundation, Arth Martha's Health and Wellness, Ada S. McKinley Community Services, the National Youth Advocate Program. We have the Howard Brown Clinic, the Heartland Health Alliance, Edwards VA Hospital, Asian Human Services, Bobby Wright Comprehensive Behavioral Health Center, the PCC Community Wellness Center, St. Anthony's Hospital, Pillars Community Health, Hart Grove Hospital, West Garfield Hospital, Pioneer Center for Human Services, and Rose Crane's Health Network, all the way from Rockford, Illinois, who's also joining us physically here today. Thank you, guys. And also, we have the New Life News Solutions. We have St. Anthony's Hospital, and we have Rush Presbyterian Hospital, and Mount Sinai also with us today. So thank you all, and I hope it's going to, I know we are going to have lunch being hosted by MedStar from Maggiano's, and then the floor is open to you all. Please give your input. It's being recorded, and Congressman Davis is here to listen, and he wants to act. Thank you all. Let's all think globally and act locally. Thank you all so much. Thank you.
And because I am the moderator today, Dr. Vijay, I wasn't on that list because I'm at the top of the list. The Lincoln Option Center, all the way from south suburban Cook County and reaching all the way north and west until the congressman's district as well. So we are here too, the Lincoln Option Center. Don't forget that name now. Okay. So, we are moving right along in our program. And because we're talking about the digital age, this is the right time now to present to you, The Behavioral Health in Digital Age by Ramesh, Ramesh? I am so sorry. That should not have happened. I am so sorry. Ramesh Negal, Chief Technology Officer for InsophTech. This organization, I must tell you, are state-of-the-art. They really are. I have personally seen their work, and I would encourage all of you to contact him and just to see what they do and see how it could possibly make a change in what you do. All the way here from Portland, Oregon, I think that's impressive to travel here today to be with us. He brings over twenty-three years of experience delivering creative, out-of-the-box, custom solutions involving web services, client-server applications, healthcare solutions. And he's also played an integral role in the design and development of Dr. Cloud EHR. And that's what I'm, I'm speaking about, and he's going to speak on. One of the most state-of-the-art electronic health record platforms that, again, I have ever witnessed. And I bring to you, Ramesh. Give him a hand. It's power coming.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for the kind words to Ambassador Green. And I feel very privileged today, you know, to be able to talk in front of you. So thank you, Dr. Perbacher, and the Citizens Action Alliance for inviting InsophTech to be part of this program, being able to talk in front of Congressman Davis, Congressman Raja Krishnamoorthy, and you all esteemed folks. You know, as I thought about what I should say today in terms of behavioral health and, you know, in this digital age, everything that you do, you know, changed last year. Everybody had to get up in a hurry and figure out how they could do Zoom, you know? You know, Zoom is has a completely different meaning now. So our goal at InsophTech and Dr. Cloud EHR is to be a partner. That's our focus. Our focus is to be fit and helpful. So in terms of providing you with solutions, you know, for the problems that you have to solve, you know, being able to provide whole-person-centered care, you know, treating the person wholly, being able to look at medical information, you know, bringing the integrated care into the mix, our goal is to put together solutions that work for you on a day-to-day basis. So I'm here today, you know, we're here to be able to answer questions, provide you with information that you might need so that you can put together solutions for superior care delivery. As, as we built Dr. Cloud EHR, what we noticed is in the behavioral health world, there's a lot of solutions out there, but you cannot go to the local Best Buy and buy your box of EHR, install it, and boom, it works, right? It's all there? No, that's not true. As a platform, being able to do the things that you do, bring, you know, see patients, take care of them, do your notes, get paid for what you do, and then do that all over again, you know? So I have renewed respect for the space that I'm in, and like I said, very grateful and privileged to be here, talking about Dr. Cloud EHR and what we can do in the behavioral health community. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much for that. And please do take advantage of the opportunity of his presence this afternoon and learn more about what he has to bring to the table. So we are at a very good point in our program. And we are now going to hear from a woman that I think is just so full of passion, delivering our Gandhi King Summer Report. This woman is Dr. Mrs. Sandesh Kumar. She, I'm going to present you way on my deal. Just hold on a second. Mrs. Dr. Mrs. Kumar is a counselor, an attorney, professor, community leader, and businesswoman. Mrs. Kumar is a woman of passion for others, greatness in her dedication to service and community. Her restless efforts to wipe out injustices in society gave her the honor to be referred to as Mother Teresa of Chicago. In her service, Ms. Kumar, let's welcome her to the podium.
Thank you, Ms. Green, Ambassador Green. That's not she doing a wonderful job. First time, congratulations. We are so proud of you. You have done a wonderful thing for this summit. Good afternoon, all of you, and respected our Honorable Danny K. Davis, Congressman. She wants me to report the last summit, which did, the Historical Gandhi-King Legacy Round Table Summit, was held on February 26 in Napperville. The summit was held to commemorate the Black History Month and the 73rd death anniversary of Gandhi. The theme of the summit was to how to see the challenges of the behavioral health, which we are seeing right now very vividly. What better way to commemorate and celebrate the King and Gandhi legacy than, you know, by the challenges of the behavioral health? The singular result we found by this summit is how to continue in strengthening the behavioral health community at the care providers and like you. The need, all the behavioral health providers and across not only Chicagoland, but beyond the borders, which we are seeing now. Thus, the city, the report about, I say, and the singular result which we found, the need to continue and to do the behavioral health, and thus, the Citizen Action Alliance Behavioral Health Chicago was born. As Dr. Prabakar says earlier, that the historical epoch-making event on February 26 is echoing today across the border, across the India, Africa, and Europe. And you see that recent time, as Dr. and the Congressman Raja says, that we could not talk about mental health and behavioral health before in our Asian culture, South Asian culture especially. Now we are starting talking. When the, our sportsmans are committing suicide, when the star people of film world was committing suicide, especially Shushan Singh, if you have heard that recently. Now we are making a kind of environment to talk about this. This is happening. This is true. There's nothing too ashamed about it. So this is the time, and I congratulate all of you, the health providers, and I really want to congratulate our respected Congressman Danny K. Davis, who is so committed, so passionate for our health of communities and the mental and behavioral health. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kumar, for those wonderful words and your report perfectly on time. So it is almost the lunchtime hour. I would like to make an announcement. Our next event, Marky Calenders, we don't have an exact date right now, but it will be in June. And we'll be bringing together all the CEOs along with all of the managed care organizations because we have some significant problems with our MCOs. And we are going to have an opportunity to be at the table with them and figure out what is wrong and how we're going to fix that big problem. Do you agree? I do. I do. So the next event will be spearheaded by Dr. Butt, Tariq Butt, and hosted by the Lincoln Option Center. So we will make sure we get you the next date and location as soon as we can. I smell food. I smell food. Well, let me just say this, and then you can have the picture. So we're going to, after the picture, we're going to break for lunch, and we'll come back. It should have been 1:30, but we're a little behind. We should have been coming back now. And then the next item on the agenda would be the speakers, provider speak-out session. Housekeeping, if you don't know, that the restrooms are right around the corner from the elevators. So now, I'm going to let Ali come and talk about lunch.
Hey, everyone. Lunch is being served. The salads are here. You have the entree there. You have some drinks there. If you need anything, let me know. The plates are there as well. Anything you want to know, you need, please contact me. Thanks. Enjoy the lunch.
Okay, now picture time.
...
Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers. Let yourself go free and be drawn into these good vibrations. Have you ever felt the sunset? It's full of home answers.
Hello, everyone. Just want to give the 10-minute countdown. We're going to get started back up again in about 10 minutes. So take this time to do your last minute. Do diligence for yourself and it'll be time for the last portion of today. The behavioral health providers speak out. 10 minutes.
Bring it over this way.
Keep it like that.
They don't have to walk from top to bottom. Just scoop this over this way. No, no, no. You know?
They're coming with them.
I'll direct them. I'll direct them. I'll direct them.
Congressmen, how are you?
Okay, it's showtime. 20, 19, 18, 17, 16, 15, 14, 13, 12, 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. You did an awesome job. Thank you. That was the countdown. So it is the top of the hour for the behavioral health providers speak out. This is the time that you get an opportunity to talk about your successes, your challenges, and anything else that you need to help you within your organizations. And the congressman is here to hear. He's here to answer any questions that you may have. And then at the end, we still have time for Ramish to come up. Any questions that you may have for Insuletac? You'll have an opportunity to ask him any of those questions. He is here all the way from Portland, Oregon. Take advantage of his presence today. And the logistics of how we're going to do this. All of you have RSVPs, so I know who you are. And I will be calling on you. And then you will have your time to come up to the podium. Don't be shy. And have your say. Okay? So if that sounds good, Congressman, you good? You need anything? All right. Okay. So Ali. The hand here. Oh, you get it. Okay, then. Okay, so for all of you that were here in the beginning and you heard my intro of my organization that I founded. And it is the Lincoln Option Center. And we're a community mental health center. We have been in this marketplace for 28 years. I've been doing this work for far longer than that because of the challenges that I had personally with my own child. So this is life's work for me. Happy to be in this place right now. But we service the population of a very diverse population of people across all ages. Children as young as age four, all the way through seniors. Our catchment area is South Suburban Cook County and Chicago and the west side of Chicago we service as well. So far-reaching footprint everywhere. There is a great need. We all are in this together. We all are serving everybody in the state of Illinois. And some of the challenges and/or and successes that I would like to just speak about. The success, I think I'll start with first. This pandemic time was a good time in a lot of ways for the Lincoln Option Center because it gave us an opportunity, believe it or not, to do a lot of capacity building. And we experienced tremendous growth within the organization. So COVID reared its ugly head in a lot of ways that I wish had not happened, but am also grateful for the time that it gave the Lincoln Option Center to do some other work. And so in that, there are some challenges. And I'll speak to some of those challenges. And this is one of the reasons why I decided that we needed to have time with the MCOs. MCOs are not giving the providers the support that they need in a lot of ways. We're responsible for those lives. And we happily take care of all of the clients that we have because they're not numbers to us. They are people that we are committed to serve to the best of our ability. But we are not getting the resources that we need to make that happen. So that's my challenge. I don't know what yours is, but you'll get an opportunity to speak on yours. The other, you know, with the billing aspect of it, it's just, is ever-changing. It's always something. You know, you provide the service, you can't get paid. Provide the service, you're not getting paid the amount that you should. You provide the service and it's something, 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 something. And then you need more system. So it's always an ever-changing time, but our commitment hasn't changed. Our commitment to this work hasn't changed. So they need to step up to the plate and be a real partner to the providers. The other challenge is the fact that mine is competing with them for staff. They are just swallowing up all of the... They're swallowing up a lot of provider staff that should, we should have access to because they're in a position to pay far more than we can afford to pay in a lot of instances. And we should not be competing with people that are already contracting with us to serve the clients. That makes no sense to me. So I'm not going to take a whole lot more time, but those are just my two. And I do have a litany of more. But I want to give you all, the congressman heard mine, and I'll have my list of others to share. And you can do the same thing. If you have more than you can think of speaking on right now, get those to us because this is what today is all about. Okay? Hearing from us. Okay? All right now. I did not put this list together. So if you end up last on the list, I didn't have anything to do with this. I had nothing to do with that either. I'm not going to take credit for any. Yeah, I'll take that one. So we are going to start. So when your name is called, your agency is called, please come up. You're going to come up this way so that we're not walking over the congressman. We're going to use this space right here. And just come up and say what you need to say. Please be cognizant of time too. We don't want, you know, to give a dissertation. Is that on? Okay. Okay. So it's your agencies, your successes and your challenges. And you have more time to elaborate after. Okay? All right. So here we go. Wanda Parker. Oh, wait a minute. Wait, wait. Well, come on. I called your name. No, 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 no. Oh, you're waiting. You were first. Oh, Dr. Teresa. I'm sorry. He gave me the... Okay. See, that's why you said that. She's the senior vice president of Gateway Foundation. That's why you said that.
Exactly. I get applause. I haven't said anything yet. Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Teresa Grata with Gateway Foundation. I see lots of friendly faces. It's nice to see everybody in person and not on a Zoom. Yay. So I'll be brief. Gateway Foundation... Wow, that sounds really loud. You probably don't need that. Gateway Foundation's been around for 53 years. It's a year younger than me. And we serve addiction medicine. We do substance use disorder treatment all over the state of Illinois and in seven other states. So we are in eight states total. And actually, I'm glad I'm going first because usually substance use comes after mental illness. And it's very rare that we start talking about substance use before we start talking about mental illness. But obviously, about 80% of the people that we see have a co-occurring mental illness and a diagnosis. And what makes, sets us apart a little bit is that we see people in community and we also see people who are just as involved. So outside of the state of Illinois, we see people who are in the departments of corrections, whether they're in community corrections or within a department of correction. And that really gives us a really big view on the issue of addiction and mental illness. We're a nonprofit. We've been... We've been around, like I said, for 53 years. Most of our community services are here in Illinois. So we have services all the way from the northern region in Lake Villa, all the way down to Carbondale, Caseyville, so all over the state. So we serve everybody in your district, Congressman. And one of the challenges that we saw during the pandemic is that people stopped coming to treatment. People were scared. So on any given day before the pandemic, we had about 550 people in our beds across the state of Illinois. Just talking about Illinois right now. And in the height of the pandemic, so in March, the number went down to 90. So first of all, obviously, it hit us financially. You know, no butts in chairs, no butts in beds, no income coming in. But also, people were dying because they weren't coming to treatment. People were scared. So now we're back up to about 350, but we're still coming up to a shortfall. So one of the things I think that we learned right away is that while we were all focused on the global pandemic, we forgot about the companion crisis, right? The overdoses, the mental illness, the people suffering. And that that number grew. So quickly, we had to make sure that we were talking to people and saying, we're still open. We've put protocols in place. So we created COVID-positive units within three of our locations. We did testing right away. We had intake pods. So if you've been to a residential treatment facility for substance use, and even if you haven't, just kind of imagine, you know, a campus with different buildings. So we created spaces. We tested everybody. We tested all of our, all of our staff. We were joking that, you know, it was like, we had money for PPE, but we couldn't find PPE. So we were making our own. So some of the same challenges that all of you, I'm sure, I'm sure struggled with. So with all of those things in place, we were quickly able to pivot and continue providing services. And the other thing that we did, which I think is a, one of the few nice outcomes of the pandemic, is we instituted telehealth. So for those of you who do not know, telepsychiatry has been around for a long time. But for addiction medicine, it was never paid for. So we were not able to do it. We were not able to run groups. We were not able to do any of telehealth at all other than one-on-one telepsychiatry. So this really was a big change. And actually, it's resulted in us continuing to expand that. So now we have virtual programming across the state and even in some of our other states where people actually prefer to stay in virtual telehealth, accessing their groups. So if you think about Illinois, you know, we're up here, but most of the, most of the state is rural. 70% of the state is rural. And for some people, they couldn't ever make it to one of our facilities. So they came to residential, and then when they were stepping down to outpatient, they couldn't drive 60 miles. So now they're able to access treatment from their home. And that is growing. So again, some of the challenges, some of the successes. I know I'm probably running out of time, so I'll be very quick. So two things to remember, too, is in mental health, and we treat people in mental health, there's opportunities for housing, permanent supportive housing. But for addiction, people with the primary diagnosis of substance use, there's very little funding for recovery housing. So an area to look at is recovery home and recovery supports and continued telehealth. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share.
Thank you.
If I could ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
I know that Gateway has a long desirable history of treatment in the addiction space and is one of the most noteworthy organizations in the state of Illinois. In addition to the treatment, I come from a school of thought that says an ounce of prevention is worth much more than a pound of cure. My mother, who never went to any school at all, used to preach that. What are we not doing in terms of substance abuse and the need to do? Because there are increases. I mean, rather than going down, it continues to go up in terms of individuals who become addicted or individuals who are in need of treatment and end up getting it at a time when, you know, they weigh gone. So what is it that we need to do that we're not really doing enough of that reduces it?
That's a great question, and I think we could have a whole summit on that. But very quickly, I think there's a lot of stigma related to substance use and mental illness. So I think one thing we can do is tell stories and talk about it so that we end the stigma. Because when people become, you know, addiction is a disease of the brain. It's an illness, but we don't talk about it that way. So we don't blame people if they miss their medication for diabetes, but we'll blame somebody if they relapse and go back into, into treatment. So I think stigma is a big issue. I also think, you know, society makes it very acceptable to drink a glass of wine or now we've legalized, sorry, don't mean to be political, we've legalized cannabis. So it's very, the messaging is, oh, you know, it's okay to do that. A lot of the people we see who are, who have an opioid use disorder ended up that way from a legal way, right? They got a prescription. So I think the messages that society gives around the substances, whether they are legal or not, is critical. We need to start educating children early on. And also the stigma, I think, and I'm sure others can contribute to that.
I think societal behavior has to be changed. Thought process has to be changed. When you give some validation for drinking and marijuana, then anybody can go out of the control later.
And I also, you know, people are dying of opioid use disorder. But the number one disease that we see is alcohol use disorder. Continues to be the number one.
His question was, why it is happening? Why we are not doing something to stop before it happens? That we have to focus on.
Okay, thank you, thank you. That was great. So I'm going to say this, too. I may not call your first name because I don't want to mispronounce your name. So if I say your agency, that is the reason why I did not say your name. But I'm going to go next with Jay, the Director of Family Wellness and Operations for Hennel Family Alliance. Okay.
Hello, everybody. I am Jay, the Director of Family Wellness at Hennel Family Alliance. And Hennel Family Alliance is a social service, service agency working for Korean-American population in City of Chicago, Cook County, and Lake County. We have three offices. We are providing services in home care services and public benefit assistance services, citizenship application, and also education program, and also the mental health counseling program. So our mental health counseling program is still pretty new. It's been only three years, even though the Hennel Family Alliance has been here for 30 years so far. So our services, I mean, the mental health services is not well-known to the Korean community yet. So as you may understand, there is a strong stigma against the mental health services for our community, Korean-American people. So we are making a hard effort to let them know that there is help available. So we are trying to collaborate with other Korean community support agencies and Korean medical doctors and hospitals and other counseling centers. So it is a pretty time-consuming effort to reach out all these different individual agencies. But the thing is, we don't have many staff available at our agency, especially for the mental health counseling program. So we are kind of desperate to need to support more staff members for developing our program. The one of the issue for Korean-American community after COVID-19 pandemic might be the domestic violence issue. So we have seen the substantial increase the number of reported domestic violence issues within our community. But however, I think, I assume that the bigger problem would be the unreported cases of domestic violence issues within our community. We don't know how many there are. We don't have, we don't have a capability to investigate this issue within our community. And as I said, it's because there's a strong stigma against the mental health issues. Probably they do not seek our help. So I think the consequences of this issue would be long-lasting. I think that would affect our next generations, our Korean younger generations. So we need some support, more support, to reach out our community to increase the awareness of the mental health issues. And it does affect every part of their life. But the, it is hard effort. I mean, but we are keep, we keep trying. Okay, thank you.
Could I ask you? Does your agency get many complaints from your clients in relationship to acts of hate crimes or derogatory treatments? Or come into contact with much of that? Or if so, do they mention it as they come to see individuals? That's good. I mean, because hate crimes are being fostered on Asian-Americans in many places throughout the country, as we just recently saw in Atlanta. But we also had a great rally last Saturday in Chinatown with lots of expressions of people who were expressing concern. Plus, I also served on a committee with the Chairman of the Asian Caucus, Judy Chu, who lives in California. And Judy makes mention of this quite frequently as something that people are experiencing in different parts of the country. Chicago and Illinois in many ways is a very desirable state in some of the problems that people have in other places. We don't have them to the same degree. But we do have them, and I think we have to guard against them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jeff. We really appreciate your input. I'm going to ask if we could deviate just for one provider in place. Dr. Sophia has an emergency, but we really want to hear from him. So if it is okay, Nellie, can we let Dr. Sophia? Oh, she's not here? Okay, then that worked out fine. Come on, Dr. Sophia.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Congressman Davis, Congressman Christian Morty, and Twin for the great job you're doing moderating this. And thank you all for letting me go at this time. Unfortunately, I do have another meeting that I need to get to. I am the President and CEO of the Bobby E. Wright Comprehensive Behavioral Health Center. We are a comprehensive community mental health center, okay? Some of us, when we hear the word behavioral health, we're not quite sure what we're talking about. Are we talking about mental health? Are we talking about substance abuse and what have you? And I think that it's important for us to recognize that we all have minds. And we all, at some point, have trouble in our minds. The World Health Organization defines mental health as a sense of well-being that is sufficient for one to participate productively in their community. And that's the definition that, that we use in our agency and the work that we do within the West Side community. The Bobby Wright Center was established as one of the first African-American comprehensive community mental health centers under the Community Mental Health Centers Act of 1963. It came into being in 1973 under the leadership of Dr. Bobby Eugene Wright, who is a friend and colleague of myself and Congressman Davis. So our agency has maintained the comprehensive array of services that were required under the Community Mental Health Centers Act of 1963. Unfortunately, and this is one of the challenges we face, the funding for community mental health changed during the Reagan administration so that funding, instead of coming directly to community mental health centers via federal grants, the funding was shifted to block grants to states. And then state governments made the determination as to how that funding would be distributed. And in some cases, community mental health centers competed with highways and other projects. And then we have kind of evolved into this space now where we have the intermediary of managed care managing the funds that come to community mental health. And most of the managed care organizations really don't get it when it comes to what's happening on the ground. They don't understand the challenges that providers have in dealing with the members, their members that we serve. Give you an example. Someone appears at, in an emergency room complaining of having auditory hallucinations, they're hearing voices. Upon examination, the nurse and/or the physician, if they're fortunate enough to have a psychiatrist or a social worker in the ER, they may make the determination that this individual doesn't quite meet criteria for inpatient treatment. It's 11 o'clock at night. Individual ends up getting discharged from the emergency department at about 1:30, 2:00 in the morning. They're given a card saying, "Go to the Bobby Wright Center on Monday for an appointment." How does that individual get from point A to point B? They're also homeless. And so they end up in a homeless shelter. They don't get connected to care. And as a consequence, they continue to cycle through the high-end, high-cost services that are available to them in the community. So that, that's one of the challenges. The other challenge that we, we face is that many individuals with serious mental illness and substance use disorder end up being incarcerated at Cook County Jail. For misdemeanor crimes, like the number one crime that's committed that results in incarceration is trespassing. Where are they trespassing? They're trespassing at O'Hare Airport because it's accessible. It's cold outside, they need a place to stay. They may end up in someone's doorway. They call the police, the police arrest them. They status them, they end up in Cook County Jail. The other issue that results in incarceration is petty theft. What are they stealing? They're stealing food because they don't have food. And so we're arresting people because of the structural racism that has contributed to them being in a situation where they cannot meet their basic needs. Those of you who, you know, went to college, you all took Psychology 101, so you all know about Maslow's hierarchy of needs. I'm not going to give you a lecture on that. But if you don't have housing and you don't have food, you don't have a place to stay, we can integrate all of the systems of care we want. But ultimately, we've got to find housing for an individual. It is inhumane for someone to have to live in a shelter, sharing a bed with 30 other people in a room. How do you self-actualize? How do you get to the point that you are feeling good about yourself, according to the World Health Organization's definition, that you have a sense of well-being when you don't have your own space? And I'm not talking about a luxurious home. I'm talking about having a private room with your own bed where you can store your own belongings and feel secure. This is the state of community mental health as we face it today. Something has to be done about this. We cannot continue to allow people to suffer in the way that we do, in the cold, not knowing where their next meal is coming from. And on top of it... And on top of it, having to deal with voices in your head that tell you to do things that you're having difficulty resisting doing. Come on, this is 2021. We, as a nation and as people, need to come together and put an end to this. We talk about racial inequity. It's the new buzzword, racial inequity, okay? We're going to correct racial equity on the West Side by putting money into helping the safety net hospitals develop a better system of interoperability when it comes to how their EHRs communicate with one another. That's not addressing the real problem. The real problem is we have people who don't have a place to live. And so we have taken on the challenge at Bobby Wright. I'm going to... Can I have 30 seconds? Okay. 30 seconds, okay. So we've established a pre-arrest diversion program where we are redirecting people from the police department into treatment. We've established street outreach programs where our staff are going out and actually getting people who are using substance abuse into treatment. We've integrated primary care, pharmacy. So we're just about at the point of having a completely integrated health home. The one challenge, again, if there's... The one thing I want to leave this group with today is the idea that we've got to find a way to fund people's basic needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sophia.
And if I might.
All right.
I'd just like to take a moment and commend Dr. Sophia for his outstanding leadership of that agency. The politician Confucius said that, "He who tooteth not his own horn will find that same will not be tooted." I'm always pleased to note that I was a founder of the Bobby Wright Mental Health Center. And that Dr. Bobby Wright and I were classmates in graduate school. Graduated from the very same program. Had classes together, had the same professors, and were indeed friends and activists in what we call the movement. So the philosophy of Bobby Wright continues to live through Dr. Sophia and the others who work there. Also, I have to commend the Illinois State Journal Assembly because cash bail is no longer going to exist in the state of Illinois, where individuals are lingering in the Cook County Jail because they can't pay $100 fine to get out for misdemeanor, or they just simply don't have the money to do it. So we're going to eliminate, or we have eliminated, the Illinois Journal Assembly just recently passed legislation, and the governor has signed it. We have passed it in the House of Representatives. And I'm pleased to note that I have been a national leader, along with a fellow named Willie Wilson, who put up a lot of money to fight no cash bail. And it no longer exists in the state of Illinois. And when the Senate passes the George Floyd Policing Act, as we've already passed in the House, it will become a national act once they act. So Dr. Sophia continued to do the outstanding work at Bobby Wright and espoused the philosophy of Bobby we call the Black Nationalists.
Thank you, Congressman. Next, we have Jeff from Counseling and Youth Development Services.
Hi, everybody. I'm actually from UCAN, and I'm with the Counseling and Development Services Program within UCAN Chicago. I don't know if anybody knows, UCAN, formerly known as ULECH Children's Advantage Network, shortened, and we rebranded ourselves as a UCAN several years ago. So I'm with the Counseling and Development Services Program, which is our outpatient program. We also provide within our continuum, and we have a full continuum of care within UCAN that, well, one, we've been a 152-year organization. So obviously, things have changed over the years, and we're now a full-service, social service agency that does both youth and care services with residential foster care, Transitional Teen Services Program, as well as Teen Parent Service Network for Youth and Care. But we also have really focused on our community services, which is where I'm in Counseling and Development Services Program, but also our Violence Intervention and Prevention Program, which has, I mean, the way I describe it is, you know, firemen, police run toward danger. The same thing that our staff in Violence Prevention Program do the same thing. We provide the support to those youth and those families within that program, as well as outpatient referrals that we get. Our successes in this year have been the transition to telehealth. So when the pandemic hit, we were planning to move toward this, but we had to instantly kind of pivot. And our staff and our program has been... acted very quickly, and our IT department also acted very quickly to support our staff from their homes. So the challenge we face is, I think what was said earlier about Medicaid. We are a fee-for-service program within Counseling and Development Services. And the challenge of that is, we devote a lot of time to managing the expenses related to Medicaid and private insurance, because there's a lot of denials, there's a lot of held claims, sometimes you don't know the reason, and each MCO has a different numbers for what you have to figure out what it is. So we devote a lot of time to that, and that's been a success, but it's also a challenge. I think the other challenge is, you know, we are in a lot of schools, which has been a change for the pandemic. But for us with schools, we're still getting referrals from schools, but we've lost a lot of youth that aren't engaged in schools. So those youth that we used to serve in programs aren't doing the remote learning. They've not returned back to school. So there's these kind of lost youth that we're still trying to engage. And that's where, again, where our Violence Intervention Program is kind of focused on getting those kids back into services. But it's still just that awareness for all of us that there's that kind of lost population that has such a high need that just have not engaged with anything with the pandemic. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Wanda. Your turn, Aunt Martha's.
Hello, everybody. I'm Dr. Wanda Parker. I'm the VP of Clinical and Therapeutic Services with Aunt Martha's Health and Wellness. We have about 25 sites across the state of Illinois where we do primary care, psychiatry, primarily telepsych, therapy, dentistry, and care coordination. But we're also one of the only organizations in the state of Illinois where we are a child welfare organization and an FQHC. We also have Foster Care Division, and we provide substance use services in the clinics as well. So I think that since we've been doing telepsych for many years, the success is that we were able to pivot relatively quick to doing an extended telehealth services with our therapists and providing telehealth visits for primary care as well. We've also been very busy doing a lot of COVID testing and distribution of COVID vaccine. So I see a lot of successes as it relates to patients that were not showing. And I think one of the questions that Congressman asked about, what are we doing wrong? And I heard some of the folks talk about is that those social determinants of health, we have to address those. That includes housing. That includes employment opportunities, transportation, really being able to wrap around, because someone who has a mental health or substance use disorder can't stabilize without a place to lay their head, right? And they may need not to be in an inpatient hospitalization, or even maybe even an inpatient residential treatment program. But if they don't have any place to live, then how can they go for outpatient services, right? And how will they be able to keep their medication and make sure that they're taking it regularly and get to their visits? So I would say that there's funding that's needed for that. But additionally, I would say that we should, and this is probably because this is my own passion, as it relates to trauma-informed care, because we don't take the time to think about the impact of that on health outcomes. And that's big, whether it be for our children all the way to our seniors. Additionally, I would say that there needs to be some funding for those that are underserved for technology, because I think that we've all realized how important having a smartphone or a tablet is in this day and age to be able to continue to provide those services. We saw a lot less no-shows for folks that would struggle to be able to get back and forth to their appointments. But now, you know, we still have some technological challenges that are there. So that would be my input. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Okay, so we have... I'm going to try this. Sherifah? Did I say it right? Okay, great. Okay, Sherry from Adas McKinley.
Good afternoon. My name is Sherry, Sherifah, but everyone calls me Sherry. Olopopo Hardrick. I am the interim senior director for clinical services with Adas McKinley in our behavioral health program. Adas McKinley has been around for over... Can you guys hear me?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is my first event during COVID, so... All right. Is that better? Okay. Adas McKinley has been around for over 100 years, and our behavioral health program has been servicing the South Side of Chicago for almost 40 years. We provide outpatient mental health services and emergency mobile crisis intervention services. And as Ms. Twin said earlier about the MCOs, we too have lost staff to the MCO, so that's a problem with needing more diverse qualified candidates to meet the needs of our community. We also, because we are a crisis intervention, mobile crisis intervention agency, we need more collaboration with local law enforcement to assist appropriately when needed during mental health crisis situations, in addition to officers being trained and being able to recognize a mental health crisis versus a criminal problem, but also recognizing if an individual has a disability where there's an intellectual deficit and they may not understand exactly what's going on or what they're doing. Our program has one psychiatrist, and over the years, because of budget cuts and a lot of programs in community that have gone away, we've acquired a lot of clients. And so one of our challenges is access to culturally sensitive psychiatrists who are comfortable with coming into the community to deliver services to the clients that we serve. There needs to be equitable access to psychiatry within the same systems as those that have private insurance. There also needs to be equal reimbursement rates for services, whether it's physical face-to-face service or services delivered via video platform, especially under the current circumstances of COVID-19. So COVID presented new challenges for us related to providing services. However, it opened the door for us to expand services utilizing technology. However, we continue to face difficulties engaging clients with therapy. Prior to COVID, our clinicians were going to the schools to deliver services. Right now, that has been very difficult, and so we need for schools to recognize the need for behavioral health as a part of the school day to make sure that that can continue. Prioritizing mental health continues to be a problem due to concerns with stigma. Individuals need to understand that mental health treatment is not just about obtaining medication, but also utilizing behavior modification as well. Also, please forgive me, I'm so nervous. We also need more partnerships with other programs to make sure that our clients have access to additional needed resources outside of just behavioral health, working with community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. You did an awesome job.
Can I say a word? Basically, because Dr. Olopopo is a chip off the block. I happen to have known her father, and to have known her father extremely well. Not only was he an outstanding physician, but he was an outstanding leader of the Nigerian community here in Chicago and throughout the country and in Nigeria. And so that's probably why she was kind of feeling a little bit... Whatever. But she has big shoes to fill, and she's filling them. And since I said something, I may as well mention, Adas McKinley has been one of the most outstanding social service agencies in the city of Chicago and in the country. One man, who is a legend, who worked there, put more than 50,000 black children into colleges and universities. His name was Silas Purnell. And Si started out, he actually was driving a truck for Coca-Cola, and decided he wanted to help kids go to college. And so he became a legendary. You run into black people all over the country, and they'll be talking, and they'll end up telling you, "Is Adas McKinley still..." Well, yeah, they said, "Well, Mr. Purnell got me in the University of wherever, or he got me to wherever." One of the members of my staff, Dr. Caleb Gilchrist, we were chatting the other day, and Caleb said, I said, "How did you get to Oklahoma to go to school?" He says, "Si Purnell." So Adas McKinley is a well-known entity in social service work in the United States of America. So thank you.
Okay. So let's have next Carrie Patch from National Youth Advocate Program. Do you want to speak? Okay, so... Oh, okay, all right. Well, we'll move to the next. Look, come on! She opened the door for you. Come on!
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. I feel so privileged to be here today. First, I just want to kind of reintroduce myself. My name is Ashley Ice. I'm the behavioral health director at National Youth Advocate Program. We are in 10 different states across the nation, or I guess across the US. But in Illinois, we currently are in Matson, Pilsen. We just branched out to DeKalb. We're moving into Peoria, and we're also touching base with Rockford as well. So we're, in the last year, we've really grown, which has been one of our biggest successes. But there's a lot of challenges that come with that. So being the behavioral health director, one of the things I'm very passionate about and really focused on at our agency is this issue of complex trauma. Speaking to different programs that we work with, underneath the issue of all of them... Speaking to different programs that we work with, underneath the issue of all of them, we get to the issue of complex trauma. That goes with, what do we need in order to mitigate the effects of that, right? Both when we speak from a micro-mezo and macro level. I think micro, I think there needs to be more psychoeducation across different communities about how trauma impacts the individual, how it impacts relationships with people, how it impacts communities, and in turn, how that impacts the larger systemic issues that we have at play here. So I think we need literature that talks about how we are anti-racist, how we are anti-oppressive, how we are anti-prejudice. I think we need literature that reaches all of these different systems that we work with so we can be informative and prepared when we are working with such vulnerable populations. So we have issues that we have talked about already with homeless youth or homeless clients who don't have access to their basic needs but are being punished and marginalized for the things that they need. So we have a really big issue in society right now that we don't understand how complex trauma works, nor how it impacts our society, and how we continue to try and Band-Aid the problems that are at the root. And so I think we need to go to the root. And that is where I will say my piece, and I will end here. Thank you so much.
Well done, Ashley. Okay. Dr. Martinez is in the room and would like to grace us with some knowledge. So, Dr. Martinez, oh, you are so welcome.
Congressman Danny Davis, a pleasure to be here. It's an honor and a privilege. Let me take this off. Ms. Green, thank you so much. And yes, on behalf of the Hispanic community, I want to underscore the need, which I, as a child adolescent and adult psychiatrist, see a huge disparity, especially in the state-operated facilities that I now work at. It took a lot of work and unfortunately put me in a bad position, but I requested, I demanded bilingual, bicultural, and I do mean bicultural, because you can have a Spanish surname, but that does not mean that you can connect with the Spanish-speaking population, nor can you actually describe what these medicines do to them. There's nothing wrong with medication in its proper course, but there has to be a place and a time where labs come to directly, directly measure just exactly what those medications are doing. So I applaud the psychogenomic approach, which focuses on receptors so that we can find out who is the rapid metabolizer and the slow metabolizer, because the slow metabolizers will have devastating side effects. And I've seen it in the black population, I've seen it in the Hispanic population, and the Asian population. And yes, the white population also. There are 2D6, there's all kinds of different receptors, and they really need to be fished out. And having worked with the American Physicians Institute for Advanced Professional Studies, I can say without a shadow of a doubt, 12 years I spent as a mock oral board examiner working with psychiatrists where the patient would be sitting here, psychiatrist over here, and neither the two would connect. And that doesn't happen just with psychiatrists. We are now in a kitchen where there are many cooks, and unfortunately, sometimes it can be a disaster of misunderstanding, miscommunication, and chaos. So I applaud Congressman Danny Davis for being here, to hear us out. 15 minutes is not enough time for any psychiatrist to come to any kind of a decent outcome for any child, any adolescent, or any family, or any adult, for that matter. And the tragedies, the outcomes that can happen when they are given inappropriate medicines are heinous. They wind up with, with criminal records, suspended from school. There is one Latino young boy who was disabled, ran up to the roof to commit suicide, because prior to his brother leaving to college, he had been helped with his homework. But once he left, because he was so disabled, he couldn't deal with it. And the teacher, to punish him, put him in the corner, called him ignorant, and to face the wall when everyone else around him would laugh. And the parents on that particular day had gone to, to a march for immigrants, and they had no idea that their kid was tossed into a hospital. There are many egregious, egregious actions that are occurring in the name of mental health. And I think it's high time that somebody took the reins of the horse and, and directed it into the right path. Outcome measures for, for MOCs, we need to have an accountable report card, just one, two more minutes. Cookie cutter approach, one dose fits all, does not work. Burnt-out healthcare professionals do not belong in the treatment of families. They need help. They need assistance. Effective communication, attentive and long-term care for undocumented Spanish-speaking people, they need to have the appropriate care in place. Bilingual, bicultural nurses, bilingual, bicultural social workers. Access to care, eight months to wait, there has to be something done in the meantime. Telepsychiatry, someone to meet the needs. In California, they have promotoras who go out and provide education, lifestyle, diet. These people are drinking two liters of Coke, of course they're going to get anxious. They need diet, training, support, exercise, effective communication between the parent and the child and the system. So, I think I've said my piece. Crisis Intervention.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Martinez. Thank you, Dr. Martinez. Thank you so much. She's so passionate about everything.
One last thing, no parent should ever have to terminate their rights in the state of Illinois in order to put their child in residential care facility. Never. And it is happening.
Thank you, Dr. Martinez. Okay, so now we are at a good place to introduce to the podium Carmen from Metropolitan Family You are welcome, Carmen. Okay, Vanessa Schwartz.
Good afternoon, everyone. I've been with Metropolitan Family Services for a little over two years. Vanessa?
I've been with Metropolitan for about 26 years.
And now you see why I have to honor that she knows a lot more about Metropolitan than I do. I will say, though, that Metropolitan has been around since 1857. Yes, and it started as, I'm going there. No, actually, it was, it was Travelers in a Member Trade, right?
The first time, but United Charities afterwards.
Thank you very much. So I will let Vanessa give us a little bit about what we do, and then I'll focus on behavioral health.
We're a social service agency. We provide behavioral health services. We also provide prevention, community school programming, young fathers, home visiting programs, and a variety of other programs throughout the city. We are in DuPage, Evanston, the north, Midway, and southeast and Roseland areas, as well as Payless. And we, again, we provide behavioral health services mostly out of our southeast and our Payless Heights centers, but we provide behavioral health services throughout all of our offices as well. And we have been over, in the city of Chicago for over 160 years.
So as quickly as I can go, because I know it's getting late and we're getting a little tired sitting down. Workforce development is a big issue. We know that there's a House bill that has passed that includes some of the workforce issues as far as remedies, but that's not going to happen fast enough. And I think that's a critical juncture we're in, given a pandemic. I don't know how long it's going to take us to get out of the pandemic with regard to the addition of severity and acuity with behavioral health issues. I think that's something we all need to start thinking about, because as soon as we're going back, we're going to see the issues at work, at school, and these numbers are going to get really skyrocketed for all of us. A big issue is unfortunately that we're being set up in a way where we're competing with one another for funds, right? We are almost becoming, I always work on parallels, right? Our communities are fragmented. Our social service is fragmented. When our community members are struggling to find locations for workforce development, for early learning, for behavioral health, for psychiatry, it's mirroring what's happening to us, right? I don't think it's any secret that when we see a fund, everybody's grant writer is trying to figure out, how are we going to get this? It's no secret that we're trying to figure out how to not step on each other's toes. And I think that that's a very unfortunate situation of social services, especially in behavioral health. So that's a huge issue for our agency, because we are huge. We are pretty huge. We're over 1,000 staff. We're in a very broad area, although there is a lot of members here who have even wider areas. But it becomes very touchy for us to be able to serve our communities, but be able to be mindful of our colleagues who are also going for the same grant, right? How does that work for us? If we're talking about being culturally diverse, about knowing the populations, about making sure that if a community has a diverse population, that they can access diversity within their community, and that it's not just one agency that got that pot of money, that's a huge struggle for all of us. On a federal level, I am an LCPC. I don't understand why I won't get paid to see our seniors. We are knocking our seniors out by not giving them services with individuals that have the proper licensing to give them the service. This is an old situation. This isn't new. That's not a state level. Medicaid pays us equally, not equally in healthcare, but equally with licensure. So those are some of our pain points. And why is it a pain point? Because it goes back to our staffing levels, right? If we're all competing for the same funds, we're all competing for the same staff, whoever gets reimbursed at the highest rate is able to pay more. And now the rest of us who don't have the FQHC status, who don't have the healthcare reimbursement rate, are struggling more. I'm up here representing community mental health centers, right? It's a continuum. We're supposed to have ACT, we're supposed to have PSR, we're supposed to have mobile crisis, we're supposed to have an array of stuff, but the reimbursement rates unfortunately are, they're not sustainable, right? And we see many of our partner organizations closing down those services because it's not sustainable. So by the time that FQHEs can do PSR, can do ACT, we've already lost the connection with our clients, because again, we're all competing. So that's, that's a real pain point for many of us, I think. I'm not saying it just for us. And then there's a huge disparity in the amount of paperwork for the purpose of accountability with Medicaid populations. When we have private insured individuals, they don't have to do the IMCANS. They don't have to do the Ohio, thank God the state has stopped that. But, you know, when you talk about assessments, when you talk about the platforms, when you talk about the reports, that takes time away from our clinicians to see community members. And we do understand that accountability is important. We understand, it's part of a business, right? We need to be responsive to taxpayers for them to know what we're doing with the funds, for us to have outcome measures. But there needs to be a balance. And it never fails that when we have our licensed clinicians leave, they're looking for private practice to get away from all the documentation. So if we're not getting reimbursed sufficiently, and there's a discrepancy between the amount of direct service that my clinician can provide, because they have all this other documentation that they have to do, it, it keeps going down, right? What we can do for the community keeps decreasing. We've had a lot of successes, we're still here. The pandemic definitely threw us for a loop, but we managed. Unfortunately, I think we are missing, as we've all noticed, a lot of community members out there. So I think our biggest concern is, how do we get out of the pandemic quickly, right? It's, it's not over. The troubles are going to start becoming more and more evident. I thank you so much for your time, and so much for inviting us to do this. It's really meaningful that you're doing this to make sure that we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So on point, so on point. Next, we have Brandy from Howard Brown Health.
Thank you for having me. Hello, good afternoon. I'm here representing Howard Brown Health, which is a very large federally qualified health center in Chicago. We have nine sites, I think, last time I checked, and three retail shops. And our goal is to see the liberation of the LGBTQ plus community, but we're also a community health center at our core. So we take care of everybody, regardless of their ability to pay. It's been my privilege to join Howard Brown Health in the middle of a pandemic. And before I was an executive director running the behavioral health and social services division, I was faculty at Rush Medical Center when the pandemic hit. I was seeing patients for Heartland Alliance Health part two days a week in Inglewood, and I was teaching health equity and social justice as an assistant professor, excuse me. As one of the 1% of black psychiatrists in this country, I can't tell you what it felt like to sit with my black patients and watch them slowly come to understand that the medical machine does not see them. I, there came a point when my notes were backed up and I couldn't keep up. It took everything in me to sit with people, sit with them, as they told me stories of neglect, as they told me of their fears and their loss. And I came to understand that all the medicine in the world, there was nothing I could prescribe that would save them. And when they said to me, doc, I don't have hope, I understood that at times I didn't have hope either. And in those moments, what got me through was thinking about the great healers of our human history, Dr. Martin Luther King, Gandhi, Mother Teresa, the greats. I remembered that in 1966, Martin Luther King stood in Chicago at a press conference and spoke of the racism in the American medical system, and spoke of it being one of the greatest injustices of our time. Those of us who have had the privilege of sitting with souls and listening to them, also known as therapy, understand that it is our shadows which most drive our actions. I believe now, we're at a time in our history where we have a great decision to make. So many of my very brilliant colleagues have spoken about the health disparities, the housing, the lack of food, the lack of basic human dignity, that are at the heart of the great mental illness that is seen in our country right now. I agree with them. I also think that right now, we can't afford to do anything except tell the truth. And the truth is that the reason people are unwell is because of racism, is because of homophobia, is because they are not seen as human beings, is because they are given pills when what they need is their souls to be hugged. I believe we have a way out. I also believe our time is running out. It is up to us to help every single person on this earth understand one thing, that I am free to express my true nature. And it is our jobs to remove every single thing that makes that not true, or we don't have a chance. I think the question for us here is not what we must add, what we must fund, but what we must take away. And it's enough now. I hope that in the future, we become willing to engage our own souls and ask when we stopped healing, and charge ourselves with seeing souls. I believe it's the only way out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That was so, so needed. That was so, so needed to hear. Our next provider is Dahlia from Heartland Health Center. There she is. Did I say, did I pronounce your name? Okay.
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dahlia Galván Morales. I work at Heartland Health Centers, which is a federally qualified health center in the north side of Chicago. We have 18 locations in the far north side and the northwestern suburbs. And one of the successes that I can speak about right now is the integration of our primary care services with mental health care services. So we have been privileged to partner with organizations like Thresholds, Trilogy, C4, where they provide the mental health services. And we are right there within their facilities to provide primary care services and any other services that they might need. Along with that, because it has been a success, we see the need of furthering those services within different communities. We see the need of furthering those services, especially within the immigrant and refugee communities. We're currently conducting assessments within our communities to determine what needs are out there. And what we're hearing, just like everyone else here, is the need for mental health services within these communities. There is a need because these communities, as a lot of you have mentioned earlier, are stigmatized, right? We don't talk about mental health services or mental health needs that we have. Substance use is a huge no-no in our communities, right? When people overdose, when people pass away because of substance use, we just say, you know, they had a heart attack. And that's it. That's the end of it. So I believe that we need, as was mentioned earlier, we need culturally sensitive providers that can understand, that can speak the language, and that can connect with these individuals. The other challenge that we have seen, especially within the undocumented communities, the fear for seeking out the services and asking for help, out of fear of the consequences that will happen in the future when, if they have the opportunity to adjust their immigration status, is this something that is going to come back, right? Is this something that is going to show up in the future and prevent them from accessing those services? So those are some of the challenges that we have, but we are very glad to be here and to be learning from all of you, and we look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sharah. Edward Hines Jr., VA Medical Center. Okay, all right. Hopefully he'll be here the next time. Eric Lindstrom, Asian Human Services. Who I thought his name was Greg. That's a joke between us.
Good afternoon, everybody. I want to take the opportunity just to thank Representatives Kristina Murty and Congressman Davis here for letting their advocacy to the behavioral health cause and just being out here to support this event, and also to MedStar for hosting. Thank you so much. So certainly heard a litany of issues that I think a lot of the providers are facing during these times, so I'll try to echo a couple of those that I think, you know, also affect our population. So I'm with Asian Human Services. We are a human service organization located on the north side of the city, so we serve the Uptown, West Ridge, and Rogers Park area. We have a wide variety of services, including behavioral health. We also offer workforce development, community health services. We have a charter school, English as a Second Language courses, and a variety of adult education courses as well. When COVID hit last year, I think immediately all of us realized that we had to find a new way to deliver service, and so quickly that became delivering services virtually via telehealth. And so one of the things you need to engage in telehealth services is a device in the home and a plan to access the internet. Serving a primarily immigrant refugee focused population, one of the things that we encounter so often is a real, a wide digital literacy gap. And there are numerous studies that show that folks who are limited, who have limited English proficiency are among the group that have the widest digital literacy gap. So being able to fund those devices and find ways to get devices into families' homes is more important than ever. We hear from a lot of our clients, particularly some of our older clients, that they actually prefer the telehealth setting. It's more convenient, they don't have to get out of their home. For some of our folks that have lived in, live in the Uptown neighborhood, we've even experienced, you know, clients scared to leave their home because of some of the violence and derogatory things that are being done towards Asian Americans as of late. So one of the things that we kind of consider now as we look at grants is the balancing act that we all do, but now there's another layer in there to balance, and that's putting devices or funding devices to get into the families, the families' hands. So we're now faced with, you know, do we hire more staff to serve people? Do we hire, do we buy more devices to be able to deliver service? And just the challenge of finding the balance there. I would also echo some of the issues that we have with, you know, our Medicaid system. All of our clients are low income. We work with a lot of folks that are undocumented. And sort of navigating the shell game that goes on behind the scenes with reimbursement rates, coverage being dropped, all the different issues that we deal with Medicaid. So reducing the administrative burden that providers feel to be able to work under the fee-for-service system is critical. There are, there are some MCOs that have it down where we know we get paid on time and we have less denials, and they have systems that seem to work. And there are other MCOs that are still kind of working through their systems to make things better. I, I hope that's what's happening. So I, I think those are the biggest issues that, that we're facing. Also, you know, we, we continue to work with undocumented immigrants. There is, there still exists a lack of funding to help serve those folks. And so, you know, any funding that can be brought to bear to help, you know, not, not only just identify those clients and kind of bring them out of the shadows, but to be able to provide the same level of service to someone who's undocumented as someone who, you know, was born here or gained citizenship are things that are really important. So thank you so much for the opportunity to talk, and thank you for hosting this event.
Thank you, Eric. Next, we have Joanna, PCC Community Wellness Center. Not here? Okay. Alex, St. Okay. Greg, Pillars Community Health? We have a winner.
Thank you, and good afternoon to everybody. Again, my name is Greg Lee. I'm the Senior Vice President of Behavioral Health with Pillars Community Health. I've been there for about six months at this point in time. And I also have a unique perspective because I'm coming from the world of managed care. So I spent the last seven or eight years working in managed care Illinois nationally. And somebody mentioned earlier that managed care doesn't understand providers, and I can't underscore that enough, being on the ground, providing these services. There is definitely a disconnect. So Pillars Community Health, if you're not familiar with, I, I thought we were old. We're celebrating our 100th anniversary this year, but from what I've heard from other providers here, we're kind of young compared to some of you. So we've been a variety of different organizations over those 100 years, and in 2018, we, Pillars, formerly just was known as a CMHC, merged with Community Nurse in La Grange, which is an FQHC. So we're actually kind of unique in Illinois in that we're an FQHC, a CMHC, a super provider. We also do sexual assault and domestic violence services, dental services, school-based behavioral health, IPS employment services. So we have quite a variety of services and, and different perspectives and opportunities. And one of the successes that we've been able to do as an FQHC is, is do almost 9,000 different COVID tests over the past year for our community. We've also administered about 1,900 first doses of the vaccine, and many of these have gone out not only to our staff, but also to our behavioral health clients. So making sure that they had priority access to the vaccines as well. Like others, we've done a really good job pivoting to telehealth. About 80% of our services in behavioral health now are done through telehealth, and we're working to, to move back to in-person as we open up some sites or open up access to, to more in-person. I could go on and on about challenges, so I will try to be as succinct as possible. I think, building on what Eric, you touched upon, and I think Carmen so passionately said about really what the root causes are. I think when we talk about clinical services and the different variety of services that are out there and what we can do clinically or, or about the social determinants of health, there's lots of great ideas and we're all wonderful providers trying to do the best that we can. The root causes within the system right now about fee-for-service, under-resourced workforce development, what is managed care versus what is the state Medicaid system, understanding, you know, what, what really are those causes. When I think of workforce development and what's mentioned, having come from managed care, I used to hear all the time, "Please don't take our, our workers." Realizing that the state actually requires managed care to staff at a certain level. So it's kind of counterintuitive in understanding what those root causes are. The, the ability to reimburse, I think as a CMHC, or anybody who's a CMHC knows that you essentially are a training ground for future clinicians. You get people who are working towards their license because that's all you can afford to pay for. And when they do achieve that license, they typically move on, whether it be to private practice or other types of higher paying jobs. The funding system in general, in terms of fee-for-service, is really set up, not only are we underfunded for the services we provide, but it's almost impossible to be nimble. So as we go after all of these different contracts and these new, it's great to hear that there's $100 million coming in for behavioral health services, but I'm really concerned about how much time that will take, how many different grants it'll be, where do we get the resources to be able to build new programs? Does it really impact the communities? So, so understanding, you know, our ability to be able to, to, to respond to that. I think one of the first questions you asked Representative Davis about prevention versus a cure. I think the Medicaid system specifically is set up to treat those who have a mental illness, which is fantastic, those services are needed, but we're not funded for prevention-based services, for early identification. Those are things that we have to go out and build on our own, and again, being under-resourced as a CMHC, that, that typically is, is a huge issue. I think understanding mental health versus mental illness, we talk about with the pandemic and increase in the need for behavioral health services, many of those people are not going to present at CMHCs. They're going to present in primary care, they're going to present in EDs. So how are we there to make sure that we're identifying at those points and engaging people before it becomes those people who are at risk of, of developing mental illness over time? So I think there is a lot of root cause concerns that we have, whether it's within the state system or how it's funded, but the ability for community mental health to be able to truly react timely, they all go above and beyond with the amount of hours, the lack of resources, and, and get the job done to, to try to stay up to speed. So I thank you for, for putting this together today. I really appreciate hearing from everybody and learning more about your organizations as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, thank you. Okay, next we have Mr. Jackie Glass, Director of Hart Grove Hospital.
You guys hear people must say you're this darn, darn thing. How is this? It's okay? Thank you, twin. Twin is my twin, actually. She is, from another mother, but she is. Our birthdays are the same day, so. I'm Jackie Glass. I'm a community relations person for both Hart Grove Hospital and Garfield Park Hospital. Both of those facilities are psychiatric behavioral health hospital settings. I'm going to do with Garfield first. Garfield is a 60-bed facility, opened up about 10 years ago, serves child adolescents from ages basically five through 17. They have three specialized programs, which is a YES program, youth exhibiting specialized sexuality. Then they have the Worthy Program, it's one who's been in the risk of being trafficked or have been trafficked. And then we have the Polaris Program, which is for the LGBTQ population for inpatient services. The Garfield Park also has a PHP, Partial Hospitalization Program. Okay, Hart Grove Hospital. Hart Grove Hospital has been in business over 50 years. How do I know? Because I've been there for 27 years. It's 165 beds, we serve all age groups, from the P's through adult services. Also our Partial Hospitalization and IOP, Intensive Outpatient Program for adolescents and adult services. We have two outpatient programs, one 1111 East 87th Street, we're also doing telehealth. And then we have another program in Oak Park, 101 West Madison, also doing telepsychiatry, et cetera. So the good things and bad things. The good things are still in business, the bad thing, the pandemic has been very up and down, well, it's more down and up, but the issues are the MCOs. The length of stay has changed dramatically. The length of stay is three to five days. If you get the fifth day, you're great. So it's a turnover very fast. Weekends, holidays are still including those three to five days. Problem, if you, a child is brought into the hospital, a pediatric or adolescent, the parents may say, "I don't want this child anymore." So is it abandonment? No, because he's in a safe facility. Now it becomes a DCFS ward. But DCFS ward, the DCFS is going to say, "He or she is in a safe place." So placement is something that on their radar. So we have a lot of kids in the hospital well over 100 days. Mind you, three to five days isn't at the state. What happens with that is we have to eat that bill. Now, mind you, this kid, especially adolescent, pediatric to adolescent, to almost a young adult, is still growing. They need things like clothes, shoes, and everything else, but there's no family members, so we have to pay for all those things. So when I say we have a lot of those kids, I would think Hart Grove right now, we may have 25 of those kids in Hart Grove, and maybe 10 to 15 in Garfield Park, with each one of them dealing with over 100 days and getting services. And these, and then the thing about is, how you keep them from deteriorating? Because the programs are set up for 14 days for services. After 14 days, it's repeated, 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 and now they're saying, "I need to go home." Now you've seen 75 other kids go home, and you're still sitting there, what you going to do? You're going to entertain yourself. Entertainment means for, entertainment means for adolescent is what? I'm going to tear something up. And they do. But we're doing great things. I'm proud of the services we're providing. We're statewide, we're all over, all over Illinois. We have patients coming in from Indiana and some from Wisconsin as well. So that's it for me. Thank you very much, Congressman.
Thank you, Jackie. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so he took care of Hart Grove and West Garfield. So now we have Erin Broomfield, the Director of Behavioral Health at Pioneer Center for
Hello, everyone. It's the end of the day. Many of my colleagues here today have talked about the issues that we all experience. Pioneer Center is apparently a youngster in the room as well. We've hit our 63rd year of existence. We serve the community of McHenry County, which borders with Wisconsin, and our origins started with the intellectual developmental disabilities population. Parents who wanted services for their children began our organization, and we stayed true to that original intent by serving our community and the needs that present on a regular basis. As the Director of Behavioral Health, I have a passion for behavioral health, and I see the needs that exist in all of our communities and the challenges that we all experience in trying to rise to the occasion and meet those needs. With the pandemic, we made a quick change. We were essential workers, and we were depended on to provide essential services, and we were recognized for providing those essential services. And yet now, a year out, we start the debates about, is telehealth really worth as much as in-person? That question wasn't there last year when it was the only option, and we didn't know what we were going to walk into, but we met that need, we forged forward, we changed our services around to meet the need that was right there in front of us, and we did it successfully, time and time again. And we need to have the security that when we make these changes and when we meet the needs that are presented to us in times of crises, that our needs and our ongoing sustainability will be a top priority across all funding sources. And so that's my takeaway for today for everybody, and I'm just going to end it there. Of course, we all have many other challenges and successes, but I think that that is a very pertinent point at this time and this juncture. So thank you all. The last part? No, I'm sorry. I, I think what you're referencing is just that need... I think what you're referencing is just that need that we were there and we met the need that presented at a time of crisis, and we need to have the security to know that our needs will continue to be top priority as we move out of the pandemic and into what the next iteration of service is gonna look like. So, thank you.
Very well spoken. Thank you, Erin. Kelly Epperson, senior vice president and general counsel for Rosecrans. Are you still here? She left. Okay, all right. So, okay, all right, babysitters are important. Bruce Braggins. And, oh, this is a duo team, and Syed Khadri, are you all here? Medical stabilization, St. Anthony's Hospital. Okay. Okay, so now we're at Ramesh. Come here. And this is the opportunity again to have a couple, not long, because we want to get the Congressman up as well, so take advantage of this time with Ramesh.
Anybody have any questions about, you know, how, I guess, this digital age that we're moving into? I think, like Erin said, you know, you did what you could last year to go through the crisis and provide services. And as you move into this next digital age, where you need all of this information that comes into your EHR, how you make use of it, how do you provide services, how do you bill for it? Any questions? Yes, Randy?
I mean, in this day and age where, you know, it's the age of videos, videos have to be less than three minutes, well, now I guess it's less than a minute, 30 seconds, TikTok. So, technology can help definitely getting people up to speed. It'll have to be based on what the curriculum is, you know, who, who we are training, and, you know, changing programs in schools, making those resources available so that staff is knowledgeable on how to manage that curriculum, and how to bring maybe an educational EHR that everybody can use. That might be another option that we might have to look at. An EHR, there can be an educational platform, a common one, you know, standardizing things. And that's one of the things that when we started building standards, I guess, in the behavioral health industry or in our community, there's no standards board that says, you know, across states, counties, all over the nation, there, this is how you do an intake. These are the notes that you're gonna be using, and it's acceptable in order to be able to pay. Every payer seemed to set their own standards, MCOs set their standards, and us, I guess, you know, behavioral health providers, you have to figure out how to make sure that you meet those standards and then get paid. So standardizing that, I think, will help, because then a technology can apply towards that AD 1020 rule, if you will. Yes, Dr. Martinez?
Telepsychiatry, do you have any concerns about confidentiality or how we secure that if we're working with a
That's a very good question. The question is, how do you make sure that telepsychiatry is safe, secure? If anything, what last year showed us was people are comfortable with technology. You know, everybody, like I said earlier, everybody had to suddenly know how to do technology, know how to do Zoom, know how to set up meetings, you know, individual appointments, group appointments. Patients felt comfortable using those portals. You know, patient portal has become a, an instrumental tool in making sure that you provide services, contact your provider. Patient engagement is another big thing that's coming through, because people feel secure about how they're using that technology. As far as making sure that that information is secured, there is already standard protocols that we're using, where we're using information that is secured using bank rate protocols, you know, banking online. Similar to that, way to secure that would be, you know, information, way to secure that information would be, people are using technology that is standard, assigned, you know, standard encryption, you know, things like that. That's how you'd make it secure.
And for those patients who don't have computers, would something be set up maybe that somehow prevents them from
That's a very good question. You know, how do you provide access to these resources? And I think, maybe, you know, Congressman Davis can also maybe help there in terms of moving money towards libraries have computers, but maybe they need to have private kiosks where they can achieve, they can access these resources. Yep, good question. Any other questions? All right, well, if there's any, no other questions, like I said, the digital age is moving to that fourth wave, that next level, and you need a partner, and, you know, we are a partner, we're here for you to help you solve that problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ramesh. Okay, we have come to the hour where we will now turn over the mic to Congressman Danny Davis. Come on, Congressman.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. You know, as I listen to everybody, I couldn't help but think of one of my most favorite expressions, and that is that life is but a minute, just 60 seconds in it, forced upon us. We didn't seek it, and we didn't choose it. But thank God, each one of us can determine how we use it. We suffer if we abuse it. Just a tiny minute, but eternity is in it. I want to thank Dr. Vijay for having a creative spirit and who is endowed by our Maker to come up with thoughts and ideas to do things that may not have been done before. One poet said that I see things that are, and people wonder why, but I also think of things that have never been and ask why not. So when I see all of us coming together to discuss behavior health in our country, I can't help but know that we've come a long way, looking back as a way of determining how to go forward. I want to thank MedStar, because if they didn't have this wonderful facility, we couldn't be here. We might be out there on the highway somewhere, trying to have a discussion, which would be pretty challenging. But you know what they used to do with people who had mild behavior problems? You ever read the Bible? If you ever read the Bible, there was some called leprosy, and people who had leprosy, they just take them out. You heard about the colonies of lepers? These were people who had spots and things and difficulty work. They just take them out in the woods and leave them by themselves. Then there was the creation of some called bedlam. People who had mental health problems, they just take them out and leave them, and they'd be out there hauling and doing things with each other. And so out of that emerged the terminology, bedlam. They was just creating bedlam. Society decided it wasn't nothing that you could really do. You remember the story about the swine who got driven into the lake, had the evil spirits in it? All of those things have some sense of relativity, and that's what a lot of folks thought about individuals who had this strange behavior, who heard things, someone was talking to them and they didn't know what it was. The devil made me do it. All kinds of things, but we've come a long way since then. A long way. We still got a long way to go. I was fortunate to work with various spirited psychiatrists, and people used to ostracize them and ostracize us. His name was Kermit T. Melinger, and we used to go all over the country trying to talk about treating people who had addiction problems. He even slipped and started a methadone maintenance clinic. Of course, he got fired, but he did. He started a methadone maintenance clinic without getting authorization from the board. And he had clients, because he worked at the VA also, but he had other people who would slip and see him where he was. He'd have to slip out to go home at night, because his clients would be waiting for him out in the parking lot and needing to see him. Also, we celebrate, this is the 50th year anniversary of federally qualified health centers. There's so many of you who mention those. Well, I happen to work for one of the first ones. I took a job as the Director of Training for Martin Luther King Health Center in 1969 and became their primary proposal writer. Then I went to work for the Miles Square, worked for them, got involved with the National Association, and became President of the National Association of Community Health Centers in about, I guess, 1975 or so. And I actually was totally involved in that movement. Now we've got over 2,000 of these, spread all over America, serving about 25 to 30 million low and moderate income people all over the United States of America. We put so much money in this last bill that we created for them, because they undergird our primary healthcare delivery system in this country, period. We used to talk about doing that. We used to talk about the possibility of that happening. Community mental health really grew out of the Civil Rights Movement as a result of Martin Luther King and people marching and demonstrating, and John Lewis and people getting beat up. I've been suggesting to doctors for years that in addition to writing prescriptions, also write editorials. Write suggestions and recommendations, because you gotta do both. You can't just provide the service, but you can also generate the change. We just passed a bill, $1.9 trillion that we put into, we're putting into the economy of the United States of America. We didn't have anything to do with the creation of the coronavirus. I often say, and I say to young people, you can't always control what goes on around you, but you can determine how you react to it. You can determine how you respond. And this government has responded. Who would have thought? Yeah, it's responded. There were black people who swore they would never take a shot of vaccine, because they were scared because of what they had heard about Tuskegee and what they had heard about people mistreating blacks and doing unauthorized research. And lo and behold, they learned that it wasn't because they got the vaccine, it was because they didn't get the vaccine. I'm saying the mistreatment was not that they got the vaccine, it's because they thought they were being vaccinated and they were not. They were getting water and stuff and nothing. So we've come a long way. We still got a long way to go. Please, if somebody had suggested to me that we'd be doing all of the things that we are now doing in terms of quality medical treatment, I would have said, you're kidding. But you've got the thoughts and ideas. But then after the thoughts and ideas, you figure out a way to make it happen, and this is one of the ways. There's nothing more effective in a free and democratic society than people coming together to share thoughts and ideas and to figure out what to do next. If the folks in Georgia hadn't done what they did, wouldn't have been no $1.9 trillion. You know, we got every person in the penitentiary a $1,400 check coming. And they, they, they said, the Trump people said, no, 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 no. Said they were not economically impacted. I said, well, why not? They said, well, they got a place to live, said they got food. If they get sick, they got medicine. And so we said, no, 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 but they are people. They, they had to be impacted. Then we got some lawyers who went to court, filed a lawsuit. Lo and behold, we won the damn lawsuit. And, and, and now folks in the penitentiary who weren't going to get a dime, they got the $1,400, and they gonna get the $600 that they should have had before. Advocacy makes things happen. Advocacy. If you've got voice, use it. If you've got thoughts and ideas, make use of them. Coming together. Power concedes nothing without a demand. It never has, and it never will. If you find the level of oppression that a people will accept, that is exactly what they will get. Do you know that there are no more black guys in medical school today than there were 40 years ago? I'm saying we've made some progress, but never let us get to the basement and think we're in the penthouse. See, I, I always check myself. I said, Danny Davis, you used to chop cotton. Now, hell, you walking around with presidents and stuff and all that? I said, yeah, I'm, I'm walking around with presidents, but I'm still a second-class citizen. Policeman stopped me out there on the expressway, and I'm a driving wild black. I might have been with the president the other day or the vice president, but I'm there on the Eisenhower. If the wrong policeman stops me, I'm a DWB, driving wild black. So we've got a long way to go, Dr. Vijay. I enjoyed this day. I understand that we're gonna really do this about every couple months or so, where we come together. When I got out of college, the first job that I had, and I must confess, I had a, you know, I didn't just graduate, I had honors and stuff. I ain't never been no grand head to lowest IQ. My job, I was getting My job, I was getting paid $3 a day. I'm up in age, but I ain't that damn old. I was getting paid $3 a day. And so anybody that, when it come to minimum wage, I said, don't waste your time coming to me. You, 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 you ain't got to convince me that we have a $15 minimum wage. I know what it's like to work for $3 a day with a college degree in my back pocket with honors. And so people at the bottom need to be lifted up all the time. It's been a wonderful, and some of the people who've left and had to go, they've done outstanding work. Yulich Children, I know he was on the North Side. I, every group, St. Anthony's Hospital. Always to say St. Anthony's was in the shadow of Mount Sinai because they was right down the street from Mount Sinai. We can make a difference. I mean, that's, it doesn't matter what your job is. You know, you can be the President of Mahari, but I tell you, if the wrong guy catches you at the wrong time. You know, there used to be black hospitals in America and they all got put out of business. Some called the Flexner Report came up with new standards. And of course, the black hospitals weren't able to meet those standards, so they had to close. Managed care that we talked about, there was a time when the idea about managed care was that poor people and elderly people would never fit into a managed care system. I used to be a consultant for the Department of H M O S when it was Health Education and Welfare. And the conventional wisdom at the time, there were only two or three outfits, Group Health in California, Kaiser Permanente and a few others doing this stuff. And the idea that you couldn't put poor people into managed care because they were too sick already, the whole purpose of managed care as it emerged was actually to reduce the cost of healthcare. The idea was to reduce the cost in that if you took care of people well, then they wouldn't get to the point where they needed to be hospitalized. They wouldn't have to go to the hospital. They wouldn't have to go to the tertiary care centers. They, they'd be taken care of. But then new thinking comes along, new changes occur. Now, black folks are getting the shots in their arm. We had a vaccination two Sundays ago, did 1,200 at the Rising Sun Church, and I looked and there was a bunch of young folks. I mean, young people out there getting vaccinated. We had the alphas and the omegas and the other folks out. We can do it. So congratulations to all of you who are a part of this effort. Please continue it. Please keep coming together because when you unify, there's a slogan that one of the unions used. A people united will never be defeated. A people united will never be defeated. Have a wonderful evening. It's been a pleasure all day long.
No, thank you, thank you, thank you Congressman Davis. Thank you so much. I know that we didn't have much time for the open discussion, but if you want to just take five minutes and, and if you have any, anything you'd like to say to the Congressman. If not, then we'll have our closing with Dr. Butt. Is there anything?
Just one. The building that was demolished in Little Village left a lot of children and families riddled with lead. Are there any funding to secure this population because they will come down with ADHD, learning disabilities, and it's been linked to higher crime and so many other anxiety, depression, et cetera.
You are so right, and I am so delighted because the Biden administration has declared war on lead. And, and, and coming off the Flint experience, Senator Tammy Duckworth from Illinois is now chairman of the Water Committee in the Senate that deal with water. The mayor of the city of Chicago has declared that she's going to replace the lead pipes in the city of Chicago in terms of replacing that. My first experience with big effort on lead, I was able, when I was in the Chicago City Council, to get an ordinance passed that reduced the level of lead in gasoline that could be sold in the city of Chicago. Some people didn't understand why we wanted to do that. Well, we know that lead is a big environmental problem, especially for small children whose bodies will absorb lead, especially between the ages of zero to three. If, if, if the family lives near a highway or some, if cars are just coming by, those children get lead into their bodies with no effort. So we must reduce the presence of lead in our environment. And the Biden administration has declared that that's a big issue for them, and we're going to do it.
Littleville Square has a playground right underneath the highway. They should really do that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you all for coming. We are going to have a monthly or quarterly publication called The Hand Center. We have all of the programs that are going for all over the country and all over the world. We've been getting back into a community of different values and that. I thank you for coming. Thank you Congressman for putting this initiative together. Please give a big round of applause. I started the moment, the moment of the Congressman, which is going globally, you know? And today on YouTube Live, we had so many viewers out in the other parts of the world. In Asia, Australia, Britain, which is telling us, it's live telegraph, subscribe now. So people and behavioral health providers are watching you all and wanting you to share your thoughts. So we thank Ambassador Green for the wonderful job. And Dr. Tariq Butt is going to get all the CEOs of managed care. It's very important that we reserve early, and I'll request if anyone can post it again here. Or I don't know if the streaming was put into South Holland, but we need all the providers to come back. But we are going to get six to eight CEOs of all the managed care here. It's for you. You'll have to ask the President. We will, now I see that people leave at four o'clock Ambassador Green. We'll start at 10. So we all know why they're first. So they can get in first at one o'clock and then have these CEOs.
Yes, absolutely.
Very powerful event today. Thank you all. We learned so much about what each one of you are doing. And we continue to join us in this moment. And again, I want to applaud the leadership and the insight and the visionary Congressman Danny Davis had, saying, mental health is a basic health component that we have once we take care of our mental health. Rest part of the body will all alive. Thank you, sir. We salute you for this initiative. And let's go together. We also identify housing is a big issue for many times people. I know the district gets to see that there are homes that's working on a renovation. Thank you all. And I'm here with Ambassador Mark Tariq Butt. And you all know who's the mover and shaker, who's over here, Tariq Butt.
I just want to say you have said everything. And Congressman, I said everything. All I want to say is thank you for coming and we'll have that move. Thank you.
We're going to meet again soon, and we want to just tell you it was a wonderful program today and successful. And we'd like to again acknowledge the visionary leadership of Congressman Davis. I have Jeff here with us from the Yukon. He would give a comment of one word of how effective and how informative this program was.
I, it was a great event. I learned a whole lot. I benefited from the provided definitely from Congressman Davis. So I, it was, it was great for me to be here for the first time.
Thank you, Jeff. We also have with us Brandy Jackson, who's a black psychiatrist who heads the Howard Brown Clinic, our Director of Integrative Health Medicine. Dr. Brandy Jackson, your comments on today's historic summit, I would say.
It's a privilege and an honor as one of the 1% of black psychiatrists in this country, the United States, to be a part of this amazing legacy. I'm honored.
Great. We also have Dr. Mercy, Mercy Martinez, who's a Hispanic psychiatrist here with us. And we'd like to have her comment on Congressman Danny Davis' global initiative on behavioral health today.
Outstanding and overdue. Congressman, you have my complete gratitude. Thank you and God bless you all.
We also have with us Jackie Glass, who represents two psych hospitals in the 7th congressional district, the Hart Grove Hospital, which has been over 50 years here, and the Garfield Hospital. Mr. Jackie Glass, your comments on today's event.
It was wonderful. I hope it's not the last. I hope this is the first, at least 100 more.
And we have with us Ambassador Twin Green, who's the CEO of the Lincoln Option Center, which has been providing over 28 years of service in Southland, who's moving her service to the west side of Chicago and hopefully abroad too, beyond the borders. So Ambassador Twin Green, who did an awesome job moderating today's summit. Thank you Ambassador Green.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It's truly been an honor just coming off the Gandhi King Legacy Summit and seeing what we can really do in the spirit of advocacy. And we could not be doing any of this without our dear Congressman Danny K. Davis. Dear man, thank you, thank you.
And we'd also request, before I put you on to Dr. Tariq Butt, the President of Chicago Medical Society, which represents 17,000 practicing physicians in Cook County, and it is one of the oldest organized medicine societies over 180 years in the United States. I request Dr. Santosh Kumar to say a few words. She is the Founder and Director of Metropolitan Asian Family Services.
Thank you. I'm so delighted to have this. It was a vision of our Danny K. Davis, our honorable Congressman, and Dr. Vijay. Because we were thinking in our society, you know, the Asian society does not want to talk about it because of the taboo, because of the shame, and now it is coming out. I'm so happy and so to be part of it. And it will go continue more. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Santosh Kumar. And now we'll have a word from our host, MedStar, Mr. Neil Patel, CEO of MedStar.
Thank you all very much for coming this afternoon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. MedStar likes to be in the background, but I think as the logo says here, your partner for progress and longevity. And now I'll have Dr. Tariq Butt give us comments and then we'll over to the Congressman.
Thank you, Dr. Vijay Prabhakar, for such an enlightening event. And, you know, Gandhi King Legacy has come forward now and is helping through Congressman Danny Davis. That, that legacy is living through Congressman Danny.
Yes, yes.
Because he really brings civil rights, equal rights, and there is no greater serving than serving our fellow citizens, fellow human beings. So that's what we have learned today and we have found a way to find resources for them. So thank you so much Congressman Danny Davis for everything today. Thank you.
We also have with us Ashley Ice from the National Youth Advocacy Program would like to say her word of comment about today's summit.
It was such a privilege to be here. Thank you so much. I think this is an invigorating way for the society to take a leap forward. So, so excited to be here.
And we also have Sherifat from one of the behavioral health providers who'll say a word of comment on today's.
Thank you Danny Davis for inviting us. Congressman Davis, I'm sorry. I'm proud to be a part of the A D S McHenry family and thank you again for being here.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. We'd like to thank everybody. And now over to Congressman for the last, I mean, not for his few words, for us inspiring words to continue his legacy in Chicagoland and beyond. And to all you viewers there in Asia, Africa, Finland, everybody who are watching this program, hope it was useful for you. You please salute and thank Dr. Congressman Davis. We would be visiting you. The Citizens Action Alliance for Behavioral Health, right, Dr. Tariq Butt, is the chairman. We'll be visiting you shortly with different delegations. And we'd also like to have Congressman Danny Davis say a few words.
Well, I want to thank the Citizens Alliance, Citizens Action Alliance.
No, no, it's muffled voice going over the ears.
I would like to thank the Citizens Action Alliance and all of the physicians especially. I don't know when I've been in the presence of so many young psychiatrists in such a long time. But it's been a great event. Behavior health continues to be one of the serious challenges facing our society. As we navigate our way through this global pandemic, behavior health plays a major part of trying to meet the needs of people, not just in the United States, but all over the country, all over the world. So the role that we play and the needs of mental health. And there's nothing wrong with understanding mental health challenges. I want to thank the Biden administration for its understanding of the need to get everybody vaccinated. There has been outstanding work done. Of course, we were pleased that the Vice President of the United States was here with us in Chicago just a couple of days ago, which means that Chicago is a center of attention. We've had strong leadership from our governor, from the mayor of its largest city in the state, the mayor of the city of Chicago, from our county health resources. from our county health resources. We have demonstrated our ability to touch the lives of millions of people in our state. And I give kudos to all of those who've made it happen, especially the healthcare providers who are our heroes and sheros in the fight against this pandemic. Thank you very much.
Thank you Congressman Danny K. Davis. And we can look forward to many more such summit as the, I think the momentum has caught fire. The spark has caught fire and the fire of progress for mental health and behavioral health is here. And we'll have the last word from Ali Danraj, the CEO of Metro Events.
Hello, everyone. Thank you all. I enjoyed it. I hope you all enjoyed it. Hope to see you guys soon. And thank you Congressman Danny Davis, Tariq Butt, Dr. Tariq Butt, Ambassador Twin Green, Dr. Prabhakar, Mrs. Santosh Kumar. Thank you all, everyone. Thank you again. Hope to see you soon.